So we'll go ahead and get started, though. Today is the 5th of November. Welcome to this select board meeting, and we'll start with a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, for all. Thank you. And Ed, would you mind reading the script, please?
I'll be happy to. Pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12, 2020 orders pending certain provisions of the open law, general laws, Chapter 30A, Section 18, and the governor's March 15, 2020, and March 23 order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place, this meeting of the Town of Southampton Select Board is being conducted via remote participation. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings as provided for in the order. A reminder that persons who would like to listen to view this meeting while progress may do so by go zoom.us/join, hit join a meeting in the top right of your screen, type in the meeting ID 854-0315-8656, password 600179, hit join. Please be sure to mute your device when joining in. Note to join in video meeting with Selig, you will need to download the Zoom app from the App Store. Call-in telephone number is 646-558-8656, or by watching Access TV Charter Spectrum Channel 191. In-person attendance and public comment at select board meetings will be suspended until further notice. If you email a written public comment before the scheduled select board meeting, it'll be read at that select board meeting. If you email a written public comment after doing something at the live televised select board meeting, it will be read at the next select board meeting. Please send your public comments via email to selig@townofsouthampton.org. Let's see. Please note that public comments must be within the remittance of the policy on public comments listed in the open time public on the select board agenda. But let me edit one piece. The type in meeting ID is 854-0315-4918, and the password is 600179.
Okay, thanks very much, Ed. As usually we start with any, does anybody have any words of gratitude, gems of wisdom?
I might steal Tammy's thunder here, I don't know, but I do want to just acknowledge the cemetery walk over the last couple of weeks. I think we had a great time at the Southampton Historical Society, putting that on, and just a great participation by those who wanted to learn a little bit more about the history and showed up. So it was a good afternoon, so thanks for coming.
Tammy, that was a wonderful event. It sounded like it was really well attended, too. I cannot believe how authentic all of the people looked. It was wonderful. I think she has to be unmuted, Ed.
Okay, hang on a second. Where's Tammy? It'll take a few seconds, but there you go.
Yep, Tammy Rowland is 298 College Highway. Yes, thank you so much for the gratitude, but yes, our actors truly got into their parts and performed like I never imagined. Everybody did a fabulous job. We have a gentleman that had gone around and interviewed and took video and stuff, so we are hoping to be getting that information out for those that missed it, and we're already talking about next year's. So we'll have some new people and new actors come in, too.
That's great. It seemed like a lot of people were there. It was a beautiful day.
Yes, it got a little chilly at the end, but we had 12, we ended up having 12 people in all six groups.
That's wonderful.
Yep.
Great. Anybody else have anything you want to say? Who are you pointing to? You're muted.
Okay, there we go. Thank you. Yeah, I'm on. I have nothing to add. I just was muted and I wanted to be unmuted.
Okay. I have something to add. I'd like to offer tremendous thanks to Lucy Dalton and the, all the election and poll workers. I mean, there was a really heavy flow of people, I thought, that with all the early voting. We had a huge voter turnout in Southampton, and I just want to say thank you so much, you know, between the town meetings and the election and all the absentee and mail-in ballots, it's been huge. And there was an email and posted on Facebook like that night on the numbers, so kudos to everybody that was involved with the election.
Yeah, absolutely.
And it was a phenomenal turnout, something like 88% of all registered voters.
Amazing.
Yes.
Awesome. Okay, then, we'll move on to the appointments and resignations. The first is Matt Christie. We got a wonderful letter from Matt. He's resigning as one of the water commissioners. Would someone like to read that letter?
I'll read it.
Okay.
Okay. It says, Dear Commissioners, since I was first elected in 2012, I took great pride in being a member of the Board of Water Commissioners, being entrusted by the community to ensure that safe and reliable drinking water was always available to the people of Southampton. Unfortunately, due to personal reasons, I must resign as chairman of the commission affected as of the date of this letter. Being a commissioner for nearly three full terms allowed me to be involved with many projects for the people of Southampton. I am extremely grateful to have served and proud of all the commission was able to accomplish during my tenure. In the last nine years, I'm most satisfied knowing the water department was able to double the number of staff, which resulted in better service for the residents. In addition, developing and implementing a master plan resulted in a permanent secondary source of water, which was recently completed and fully operational. While I am no longer to able to serve as an official member of the commission, I am happy to assist the commission in any way necessary in the future. I thoroughly enjoyed my time as a chairman and commissioner and will look back on my time serving the town of Southampton with fond memories. Sincerely, Matthew and Christie. And the date of the letter is September 23.
Okay, well, thank you, and thank you very much, Matt, for your service as a water commissioner. The next appointment actually is Caitlin Rooks, and it's Swistec, I believe is the last name also, and so she has requested to be on the ad hoc grants committee. I don't believe she is here, but she did forward her application to be on the committee, and I believe right now it's officially Charlie Conicki, Chris Falls, Ed Gibson, and Matt Rowland.
Matt's kind of dropped off, actually. He was too busy.
Okay, all right, so right now it's three. So I don't know if, Chris, if you want to, if you have the paper handy, want to read what's there and maybe say a word or two in endorsement of Caitlin?
Actually, I don't have it handy, but I can just say a couple things. She's, Caitlin was newly elected also to the Board of Health this year, and she's come to two or three of our early ad hoc grant committee meetings and has been very interested, very involved with her work in the health sector. She's been involved in sourcing PPE and various other things for her work area, so she's got a knowledge of how to access certain grant facilities as well, and is just really energetic and looking forward to helping us out. So I totally support her joining us on the committee, and I thought she might be here tonight, but she may be working late, so.
Would you like to make a motion?
Sure, I guess I'd like to make a motion that we nominate Caitlin Rooks Swistec to the ad hoc grants search committee.
I'll second that.
Well, that's part of what we, I guess we have to sort of figure out our terms on these. I know we're talking about it later on for another committee. I guess we start out with a three-year term? Is that normal, or do we want to make it shorter? I don't know.
Not really for an ad hoc.
Do we need to? I don't know.
I'm just trying to think about when we had the ad hoc open space committee. I don't know if there was actually a timeframe involved. It was originally created in order to preserve the Glendale property, and then, of course, there was an application to be a standing committee, which, of course, it is now, but what do you think, Ed?
Yes, I highly recommend terms.
Okay.
Just to keep everything straight.
I mean, is it fine to do?
So whether you want to make it a one, you can do a one-year or two-year, you can do a three-year.
Okay, so it's actually, it could be any length of time?
Yeah, I mean, in this case, just to see how things work out, you might want to do it till like June 30 of 2021, and then we can regroup from there.
What do you think of that, Chris?
Well, either do a one-year, one-year appointment. I mean, that seems logical to me to, three years might be a bit much because we don't know where we're going exactly with this, but I think a one-year term would be doable, for me, anyway.
Okay. All righty. Is there a second to that motion?
I seconded it.
Okay, any further questions or consideration? No?
No.
Okay.
Did you want me to read what she had put on her application reading?
Oh, sure.
That'd be great, yep, if you have that handy.
Yeah, it says, I am a registered nurse currently serving on the Board of Health. A colleague asked me to join this committee to help ensure that we apply for grants to help our town. I have, excuse me, attended several of the meetings already and am fully committed to assisting with writing grants and...
Researching.
Researching available grants. I also am interested in working on improving communication between the Board of Health and the Select Board.
I think she is here, Ed. Is she maybe trying to get in?
Yeah, she just joined.
There you go. I just got a note. There she is.
Hi, Caitlin. Yeah, Ed's going to unmute you in a second, okay? There you are. Caitlin, hi Caitlin, you joined just in the nick of time. We actually, Chris spoke to your interest in the committee, Ed read your application, and there was a motion and a second, and I had just said, is there any further questions or considerations? So that's been read, and Chris spoke on your behalf, so would you like to say anything about your request to be on the ad hoc grants committee?
Absolutely, and I apologize, I was stuck at work a little bit late tonight. So the reason that I expressed interest in attending the ad hoc grant committee meeting is because one of my colleagues suggested that I should try to get interested and get involved, and since then I've learned an incredibly huge amount of information about grants and things that are available for our local community. I've been also communicating with Dan LaValle and a couple of other people who are really interested in working on some parks initiatives. Dan has been calling it Conan 2.0, and I've been fascinated to learn how many different grant opportunities there are for us to work on our local parks. I also really found a lot of interest in the CARES2 Act and really trying to find ways to optimize the money that we will be receiving for our community for that, and in fact, I have a meeting with a national vendor to try to see if we can source some additional PPE, which we have allocated funds for tomorrow. I really think that my hopes for joining this committee is not only to help find money for our community, but also help bring some people together who have really good ideas about things we can do for our community, and, you know, I've already been working with a couple of people on, you know, things that could happen, not only now, but maybe years from now. And as Chris has taught me, there's recurring grants, and it seems like I've already been able to learn a little bit more about things that might be coming up in the near future that I really hope we're able to take advantage of. I know that the focus has primarily been on CARES up until this week, but I look forward to seeing what's next and what we're able to come up with.
Fantastic. Well, thank you very much for stepping up. So we have a motion and a second. Is there anybody else that would like to say anything?
No, just to add, Caitlin, we just signed you up for a year.
Okay. Yeah, we have to have a term on the appointment, so we settled in on a year, just gets an ad hoc committee and also just to see where we are, doesn't mean it can't go longer. So, all those in favor?
Tishvani.
Fowles Eye.
And Groden Eye. Okay, thanks so much, Caitlin, appreciate your stepping up for that committee. So let me see on the agenda, the next thing is, well, the next thing is the ad hoc technology committee. I have a question, does it make sense to people to move up the new business agenda item that says technology committee develop charge and number of persons on the committee first?
Sure, we could do that.
Okay, so Dan had put together a nice PowerPoint, and then it was uploaded onto the website, and so we all got a copy of that in our packet. I'm just bringing it up right now, so it kind of is a great start to exactly what we're looking to do. So, Dan, you created this proposal summary, I'm trying to read it on my phone, excuse me, proposal summary, if anybody else has it more handy. Did you want to speak to that, or do you want, in terms of the number of people in the committee, I was tremendously impressed with the number of people that stepped up and filled out an application and the diversity of the experience within technology field. So do you want to say a couple of things, Dan, first?
Yeah, I would. Can you hear me okay?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, great. So, yeah, I think I, this is the last meeting, we said we really wanted to try to get this started, I think that was two weeks ago, so I put some emphasis in trying to recruit people who have talents in different areas in our, from our town that would fill out this board nicely. So I think we have a pretty good roster, and it's a, it's a well-rounded roster of the different skills that we need for the things that we want to accomplish. So I'm pretty, I was pretty, I was pretty happy and surprised that we could get the number of people to sign up so quickly.
So ideally, ideally, how many do you think you would want? There are six that signed up so far. Do you want an odd number like seven, just as a tiebreaker?
I think odd numbers are better, right? There's another person that's interested, he hasn't gotten back to me, so I think it's good to, even as if you were to approve this ad hoc committee, to have that seat available for, say, someone who wants to join in the coming months. So, you know, we don't have to have it completely filled at this moment, I don't believe.
Yeah. Dan, one thing I wanted to ask is, back when this came about three years ago, there was a suggestion of having a technology committee, it didn't really go anywhere at the time. There was a, just Florrick at the high school was very much interested in being on this committee, it might be a good tie-in to the schools. Also adding a female to the committee might be also a nice thing to do.
I completely agree with you, and I believe I reached out to her, and at the time, it was right at the start of the school year, so she was maybe a little hesitant, and I'm certainly willing to ask her again. That totally will be something I can take an action to do.
Do you, Ed, do you think that's the way to go on that, or do you think one of us or you should reach out to her?
I can reach out to her. I know she's been overly busy with everything, trying to get, you know, remote learning and stuff done for the schools at this point in time. I don't know if she has the availability or not, but I think it would be a wonderful addition, and I know you know that I made the comment when I put the packet together that, yes, everyone that has applied so far is male, and I do have a tendency to try to be PC at least, whatever, and I think that is a piece of the diversity that this committee should have some female, a female or some females on it, too.
Yeah, totally, totally agree. I actually needled Dan about that early on, so we've all said the same thing. So I think, you know, I think if, I mean, with that, and you've got one other person maybe interested, but are you, you're kind of helping launch it, but then would you drop off of it? I mean, is seven still our good number, or, I think when you get many more than that, that's, it just gets a little unwieldy. I mean, that's my worry about that, but.
Yeah, that's my, that's my experience with leading teams, too, you know, the closer you get to 10, the more unwieldy it gets, and I think seven is a good manageable number, and I think that the role I would like to play is sort of like the interim chair or the initial chair to get it, to get it started. I want to help launch this, but I, but I'm not certain with all my other commitments I made to the town that I could give it the due diligence that it deserves. So, but I think it's a worthy, it's a worthy cause, and I, and I believe I can get it going.
That sounds great. I just want to welcome, hi, John.
Hey, John.
Hi.
Hi. So you put together the initial page of this, Dan, is this technology committee would act as an advisory group to the select vote on town information technology subjects. The committee would work closely with town department heads and town administrators to understand their needs and facilitate improvements. And the proposal is to form a committee consisting of Southampton resident volunteers who have worked in or currently work in the information technology field. But I think that, so you're specifically saying it should be Southampton residents, and so I don't know, to me, that sounds like a charge. Is there anybody else that wants to comment on that?
Terms of appointment, will they start staggered or not?
I think staggered is good. That doesn't mean, you know, the person who has one year can't be reappointed, but having everybody start and end at the same time kind of guts a committee, so I would, I would go for staggered, somewhere between one to, I would imagine, three years.
Well, that sounds good to me. Were you thinking, Dan, that this would be a three-year deal, or did you want to propose something different?
You mean, commitment of each member would be committed to be on the board for three years? Is that what you're saying?
Well, it would mean that a couple of people would be a one-year appointment, a couple of people would be a two-year appointment, and a couple of people would be a three-year, so that it would be staggered.
Oh, absolutely, yeah, right, we wouldn't want to lose everybody, or, yeah, I agree.
And do you think that a three-year is, were you intending it for, to be that long of a committee for now?
Oh, yeah, I mean, yeah, let's, let's, let's get the train moving down the tracks, and then we'll, we'll see.
Okay, so we have a charge, we have seven, I think, is what was proposed as a good number, and we also have a term, so is there any other commitments that are needed right now? Once, of course, the group gets together, a chair, vice chair, and clerk are usually identified or voted in. Anything else, Ed, that you want to recommend?
No, you've got my list there, and I can work with Dan on actually putting the wording together. The only other piece that I had in here, because it refers to town departments, is I put in here, shall we exempt the school, start with, only because of the fact that if we are going to include the schools, we probably should include the school committee with the plan and what have you, we can always exempt them, and if they want to come in, we can change the charge later on.
Yeah, I think I would favor focusing more on the core town hall scenario and let the schools, I mean, they've got their IT person, hopefully we can grab Kim for a little bit to join in, and maybe, you know, that can work, you know, to their advantage, too, but I don't see necessarily involving all the other extraneous pieces of town in this. I was really, in my head, was focusing more, when Dan brought this up, more on the basic services around town hall, and to the extent they fall over into maybe, I don't know, maybe even the library or fire department or something, highway department, fine, but not broader than that in my head, I guess.
Yeah, I think my only concern has been the compatibility of those kind of satellite offices vis a vis town hall, and so that would be one of the things that maybe they don't work on the technology in those offices, but certainly making sure that we're all moving in the same direction and they are compatible at the end of the day.
Yeah.
Right, and at some point in time, whether it be via VPN or wide area network, I think there'd be a huge advantage if some of these remote locations, if they are able to or willing to, or the, shall we say, rules and regulations on the data that they utilize don't restrict them from being joined to town hall, that I think there would be advantage for everything to come back here and actually be done through a central server or servers in the future.
And I would hope that, be it the library, highway, or whoever, as this committee gets formed and gets recognized, that any purchase goes through them first just to review the specs and all that, because otherwise you could have different brands, different setups, you know, so I think that committee would be great for being the committee that does a final review of any purchase before it goes out.
Yeah, you can end up with different versions of Office and, yeah, other software, so.
I think it's a fantastic idea, and I think that when you think about library and highway and town hall, I mean, I just think that there's, it's, it's something that's been needed for a long time, so Dan, can't thank you enough for getting this off the ground and for other people to stepping up. I think it's going to be really, really helpful.
Yes, one thing I ask, and maybe you guys discuss this later or decide it later, is at least the committees I'm involved with now have a select board liaison or member of the select board that also participates in the committee as well. Is that something that you would be willing to consider? Any of you?
Good question. You know, just so you know, like, I don't know, John's been on the committee longer than I have, but, you know, when we first started, like, there were liaisons from the select board to, like, department heads, and we decided to change that because the department heads that aren't elected with their own board actually report to Ed, so we didn't want to undermine their leadership, his leadership, and so then the other, then we had liaisons to committees that it didn't seem like logical. So I don't think there's any perfect sort of list that says, you know, we have liaisons, but we, like, we don't have a liaison, well, Chris is on the ad hoc committee for grants, but we had two liaisons actually to the open space committee before that became permanent. So, I mean, what is, what does a committee feel interested in having a liaison from the select board to the ad hoc technology committee?
Yeah, I think we should have that connection, especially in the beginning, to make sure we're all on the same track, we don't want them to go left and we're thinking right, especially in the beginning.
Yeah, I guess, I guess I'm kind of thinking, well... Yeah, I guess I guess I'm kind of thinking whether you want to call it a liaison. But um John, I'm I'm actually thinking of of your role right now with the finance committee and kind of helping them start up and understand, you know, the ins and outs of how things work in town and, you know, what to do. I I really see the value in that kind of a role for somebody.
I I agree.
Yeah.
How how often do you think this committee is going to meet, Dan?
I think we've said we're going to start by meeting every two weeks.
Yeah, that's what the ad hoc committee did, just so you know, just to get some uh momentum going and then sort of backed off to the monthly. But I think that's a really good idea.
I mean, if you want me to start it just to see how it goes and I can bring it back to the whole group and we can decide from there if that's a long-term thing.
Yeah, and John, you can let me know because um um my committee numbers are lower. So if there's like, if you want me to pick up either finance or anything else that you're doing, I'm happy to consider doing that. But um.
Right now, the only two active ones I have are finance and planning, you know, greenware and all that. They don't do much, so.
Okay, all right, just let me know though, uh anybody, it doesn't matter if it feels like your numbers are high and your your appointments are heavy, okay? Okay, so I guess we have a um we have a charge.
Before you go on to that, Dan, could you just let me know, you've got my email and everything, just let me know the first meeting?
Oh, yes, sir. Will do.
Thank you.
So we have a charge and we have a number and we have a term and we have a liaison. So I guess at this point, do you want to, back to the appointments? We had six people that were um that put in their application. Do you uh want to uh all, we all got a copy of that. I mean, it's not there, I'm not listed. Do they need to be listed at a future meeting for us to go ahead and um make recommendations? Because I see one of the um people is also on the call.
My question here is uh we won't determine the individual terms. I think based on their at their first meeting, that might be something that they would want to decide among themselves because some may not want to make a three-year commitment or so on. Rather than us make the appointment with the length of term at this point in time, they could come back to us with that.
That makes sense to me, is there?
You're gonna have to have terms if you want them to meet.
They they can serve terms, even if somebody takes a three-year term and two years into it they can't serve, we could replace that person.
Right. But are you saying that we can't leave it up to them at a first meeting to determine who's willing to serve for one, two or three years?
Correct, because you have to appoint them for them to actually meet and act on anything. So to for them to meet and you to appoint, you have to give each one of them a term that's part of that appointment.
Dan, do you have any idea that you could help us along in making some of these appointments in terms of people's level of interest or commitment?
Yeah, I mean, I I think I can, I can tell you some people who are really, really responsive to me and and very interested. Um I don't know if I'm supposed to say people's names now or.
Y'all have a copy of them, Dan. It's no problem whatsoever. I mean, we can um. I mean, I feel like this committee is uh very eager and interested in getting going. And I think it's, you know, we've been talking about, you know, the server and we've been talking about getting going on the on the municipal side. So it sounds like they've already put in their application. The only question I had is um for the public's point of view, does this have to be on the agenda, their appointments? Because their names were not listed on the agenda. Ed?
I mean, it's it's listed as an appointment. I didn't know how to list them out as terms went. So I tried to group them together uh a- as basically a group under the committee that so it could be done. I don't I I don't see any reason why it can't be done. Let me put it that way.
And this opportunity was published on the website, so let's go ahead and uh not kick it down the road. If these people are eager and we're interested in making this happen and we already have a the committee sort of outlined. So everybody got a copy of this, everybody gets to read about all the folks here. I might just uh invite David uh to say a word or two since he is uh somebody who did apply to be on the committee and uh he's on the call.
Yes, hi, how's it going?
Could he turn his camera? There he is.
There it is.
Hello there, David. How do you do?
Hi, everyone. How are you? Uh my name is David Rooks. Uh I am currently upstairs from Caitlin, so. I I'm happy to be here. I hope uh my presence is not making anything uh more complicated because it it seems like maybe I may have been the only person who who uh poked their head in to see how things were going.
No, actually, most people actually that do ask for appointments usually do come, so uh we're grateful to uh see you.
Wonderful. Happy to be here. Um so yes, I, you know, I I I Kate's been talking with with Dan a bunch about, you know, everything that she's been learning about the town and how everything's ran. And uh obviously, that was very intriguing to me as well. Uh and then when the concept of uh technology committee came up, uh it it seemed like a good fit. I'm kind of one of those uh jack of all trades, uh except I don't always know how to do everything, but I know somebody who does. So I do a lot with resource management, uh a lot with project management. And I know the question of fiber has come up a lot and I have done a lot with fiber optics outside plant, mostly in central Pennsylvania, but um it's it's all applicable up here as well. So really excited to to help out where I can. Uh we've been, we've been in the town for about uh 10 years now. So, you know, as as much as we can contribute, uh we're happy to do it. We're invested. We've got a little guy right here, so we're we're not going anywhere.
Hi, cutie pie. Who is this little guy?
That's Christopher.
Hi, Christopher. Well, thank you very much, David, for stepping up and you're also a UMass grad, which is a way, way to go UMass.
Yep.
So um are you committed to a one, two or three-year term? What what uh would be your preference?
You you know, I'm wherever the need lands, uh I I'm happy to help out. So whatever's the best fit, um you know, one to three is is fine by me. Wasn't trying to run there, I swear.
Great. All right. Well, thanks very much. Um so we have uh think six. People have submitted applications to serve in the committee. Would would you like to do them all together? Uh would you like to do them one at a time? What's the committee's preference?
So we need to assign years to them, so I think we need to do at least two at a time, ones, twos.
Okay, John, uh do you have them handy? Would you like to um restart?
Not seeing six of them. Well, now Caitlin, are you included in this?
No, I don't.
Okay.
No, it starts, it starts with Dan Breen in our packet.
Okay, let me go back a little. Okay.
I can, I can read them. There's Dan Breen, there's Michael Jaeger, there's Dan Lavalley, there's Joel Hasner, Art Lawrence, and then David Brooks.
Okay.
So so let me just start it off because I'm just, I've read the applications. I'm gonna, do we need to nominate, have a second and all that for these members for the terms?
Yeah.
Okay, so I'm gonna nam- nominate, yeah, nominate Dan Breen and David Brooks for a three-year term. They they seem to have a lot of good uh background in those in that field.
Great, thanks, John. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Any further discussion about those two? All right, all those in favor?
Follows eye.
Part nine.
And Groden, I. Thank you very much.
Who made the motion, John?
John and Chris seconded.
Okay.
So Dan, let me ask you, do you, did you want like a one-year? Is that what you were telling us? Okay, so we'll wait.
Okay.
I'll be the one-year guy.
All righty. Okay, uh John, you want to keep going? We got Michael Jaeger and.
Nominate Michael Jaeger and just go down here. And Joel Hasner for a two-year term.
Okay.
Second then.
Okay, so it might be helpful for anybody who's listening to this that doesn't have a copy of this to say a word or two about um, you know, the people that we're appointing. I mean.
Do you want me to read something that on their application?
Maybe maybe where it says, please list the education experience, I think that would be nice.
Okay, for Joel Hasner, it says 38 years experience as a software design engineer for many of the major computing manufacturers such as Prime, DEC, AMC and Dell with a focus on data storage.
Great.
Let's go back. Uh Dan Lavalley, well, Dan, you're right there. So we didn't get you on this one, did we?
The other Dan.
Dan Breen, if you want to just read what it says there. Um do you have that handy, John?
Well, I'm scrolling to get to him.
I can read if you like.
Yeah, if you don't mind.
Formal computer science training at UMass, 20-plus years programming professionally, co-owner of local web development company.
Perfect. So this current motion involves Michael Jaeger and then the other person that we haven't uh read yet read is um Joel Hasner. Did you want to read that, John, or do you want uh Dan to do that?
I read, I read Joel's.
Okay, all right.
Wanted 38 years experience.
Right. Okay, so is this for a two-year term?
Yes.
Okay, uh is there a second?
A second.
Okay, so it's uh for Joel um Hasner and.
And Mike Jaeger.
Mike Jaeger. Any further discussion comments?
Did we read Mike's background? I didn't, I don't know that I heard that one.
No, we didn't.
Data scientist of computer network systems, uh construction, electrical experience, ex-Navy nuclear operator, electrician, mainframe computer operator.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, all those in favor?
Tishman eye.
Follows eye.
Part nine.
And Groden, I. Great.
So now for a one-year term, Dan Lavalley, who could give us his background, and Art Lawrence. We all know Art, but do you want me to read something?
I think we should be consistent, I think.
Okay, let me, let me get to him.
That would be another good tie-in with the municipal side.
Here's, here's Art. Uh he has a BS in electrical engineering, a BF, BA in math biology, an MS in clinical chemistry. He designed and managed disk drive projects, currently retired. And we know that he did a lot of our website work and and other computer work in the town hall as a volunteer.
And a volunteer in the building inspector's office, so.
Yes.
Okay, and then also, Dan, um do you want to say anything more, Dan?
Yeah, what's my resume? Okay, so uh I first got my degree as an electronics technician back in 1995. Then I started working in the IT field. That's how I paid for myself to go to college to get a degree in computer systems engineering, where I got my bachelor's at UMass. And then I went on working in industry for 17 years. And now I have my master's from uh Portland State, which is part of the Oregon State University System uh in in systems engineering. So that is my resume.
Great. Good, thank you. So does someone, thank you very much. Does somebody have a, like to make a motion to approve Art Lawrence and Dan Dan Lavalley?
I don't move.
Okay, and second, you got a second?
I'll second.
Okay, any further comments, suggestions?
No, I mean, just the only comment is, boy, it looks like we got six very qualified people.
Absolutely, absolutely. All right, all those in favor?
Tishman eye.
Follows eye.
Part nine.
And Groden, I. And then there's one more appointment to be made, I guess. Ed will reach out to um or if you want uh one of us to, we could do that too, Ed, if you would like to some help with that. Reach out to Kim.
No, I'm happy to.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm happy.
Yep, and now see about her joining and putting her in touch with.
Yeah, go ahead.
Board would like to make a motion and second and vote on uh approving the charge.
Yep.
I'll make a motion to approve the charge.
And I'll second it.
Okay, and the charge is what I read, which is basically uh Dan's um original proposal page. Any further comments? All in favor?
Tishman eye.
Follows eye.
Part nine.
And Groden, I. Thank you.
One question we need, do these have to go before the clerk to get sworn in?
Yes, absolutely. So everybody should make a reference Lucy.
So before the meeting, they need to get sworn in.
Yeah.
Before a meeting's set up.
Well, yeah, we'll be sending out uh appointment slips with it that uh identify that to the individuals.
Good. Great, right. Dan and David, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, so let's see, next up on the agenda, it's wonderful actually to have uh so many people stepping up. Both, especially um young, like people and parents. There's a lot of uh energy right now at the elementary level and a lot, a lot going on there too. So thank you very much. Uh the next thing is actually the uh reports. Who would like to start? Select board reports.
I'll I'll start. The personnel policies and the personnel policies and procedures board uh has not met since our last meeting, but they are scheduled to meet on Monday uh November 9th. And we'll be getting in addition to the, you know, the usual uh review of PCFs and PCRs, um PFRs, excuse me. We're going to be beginning to review the rules and regulations manual that they put together. It's a 78-page document that's kind of like our rules and personnel handbook. So we're gonna, we're gonna start that that process because apparently there are some contradictory language in in some sections of it. So anyway, and periodically you need to update all your material anyway. So we'll be doing, we're starting that process. The bylaws um met. We are moving to get some of the drafts that we have already completed approved or agreed to by relevant committees. So in the intervening weeks, we, I I attended a board of health meeting and got approval with some minor changes to our draft on the nuisance bylaw that will be uh will be bringing forward to the select board. Uh we have a couple of tweaks on that. And then I met last night with the zoning board. And again, with a couple of minor um changes to the document, they agreed to the language and the content of the building numbering bylaw that we put forward. So those two, those two are new coming forward. And um I just want to put a plug in again. We we still need, we're supposed to be, the bylaws are supposed to be a five-member committee and we have four. So let me ask again, if there's anyone out there who might be interested in working with us uh on the bylaws committee, please um, you know, you can get in touch with me or with Ed or go online, fill out one of the uh the applications uh for the bylaw committee. We we would appreciate some additional help. So that's it for me. Thank you.
I'll go ahead reading. Um board of assessors uh met just briefly this week. I did not attend to it. They were doing an interview for the uh assistant to the assessor position, uh so I did not attend that interview. Uh but that's been their main activity this week. They actually meet formally as a board on the 10th. Master plan committee met last evening uh briefly with our consultant Ken Fumia from PVPC to go through uh his presentation. And what we would like to suggest is, if we can, a for the meeting on the 17th of November, Ken is actually available then. If we could possibly do a joint meeting with planning board. Um and I was thinking of of planning because they're the ones that actually signed off on the grant that gave us Ken.
Uh, and his time will be up in December, so we need to make the best use of him that we possibly can. He would have probably a twenty-minute or so presentation and, you know, maybe ten minutes of questions at the most, so half an hour maximum. If we can spare that amount of time on the meeting of the seventeenth, I'd like to have him kind of give the presentation. There is, uh, as I mentioned last week, there is uh, sort of the results of the survey questions are, are posted on our town website. Uh, but this would be a little bit more interactive, um, and maybe more understandable. So that would be a request, if we could possibly do that. So that would be maybe for the seventeenth, um, with Planning Board. What we were thinking about is those being the two core boards that we need, uh, in the immediate term to hear the results, but then eventually we would need to be able to branch out to other boards or committees that would be involved and do a more of kind of an all-boards type meeting or some sort of other kind of meeting, maybe in January or something like that, uh, to maybe um, get the ball rolling at different committee level, uh, for anything that might be their responsibility based on what we decide when we talk about it at uh, Select and Planning Board. Uh, next, uh, CONCOM, um, basically thanks to everybody that's shown up for the last couple of Saturdays to help do the trail cleanup down at um, Manhand Meadows. Apparently, uh, the invasives have really invaded, uh, given that it's been a good solid year with next to no um, cleanup. Uh, given that that, uh, the conservation area has been closed off. Theoretically, it's been posted closed, but we know people are still wandering in there. Um, but there's lots of multi-floral rows and various other kinds of things that are all over the trails. And so people have done a good job trying to whack their way through it, at least to get in there and make a path somewhat, so that the tree cutters that are coming in to take care of the tree damage that was, uh, that incurred about a year ago with the microburst, they're coming in on the nineteenth and twentieth of November. So we feel that there's a pathway there for them to get in and at least do their work and, and um, get to where they need to go. But there's more, more to be done to fully clean up that trail. And so CONCOM is always looking for anybody that would like to help out on that. In addition to uh, that, um, we're talking about a possible project maybe in the future with Arcadia on climate change. And that was something that may come forth, um, uh, as a, as a request, uh, to the Cultural Council in town. We have dealt with at CONCOM, uh, you're aware perhaps of um, vehicles driving in on the Zipta field, hunters going in and driving down on there. And through the requests from the police and CONCOM, worked with the Fletchers and Mrs. Zipta to uh, get a chain across the driveway, basically, so that vehicles cannot drive down in there now. And the chain is in place and um, it's padlocked. And so keys are um, with the fire and police and water, I believe, and CONCOM. And uh, Mrs. Zipta herself, as well as the Fletchers. So that should eliminate a lot of um, traffic literally on those fields. It should be foot traffic only. Um, I was by there today and there were definitely some pheasant hunters out there. And then lastly, uh, in addition to the Mass Trails Grant that uh, CONCOM had received, I think I had mentioned that they had not received quite as much as they had hoped for. Uh, I think it was about fifty thousand dollars, uh, five zero. But in addition, Diana Federbin, uh, has done some small grant applications. And we just got word that uh, another two thousand dollars was received from Walmart. Uh, so um, that will go toward some, some feature, might be a kiosk, might be a bench. I don't know what exactly it might be designated for yet, but so slowly, we'll, we'll have the money ready to actually work on manhand trails and, and really make that a nice trail. Hopefully in the springtime, get, get some real serious work done out there. So I think that's about it. Uh, the next meeting for CONCOM will be on the sixteenth of uh, October, I'm sorry, November. And then lastly, Open Space is going to be meeting on the twelfth of November. Uh, nothing new uh, since they met last time. That's it, I think.
Alright, thank you, Chris. Anything, John?
Now, planning was last night. I didn't get a chance to go, but all they had on the agenda was an A and R and going over their, their past minutes. Uh, the next meeting has more of a uh, agenda. I think there's two public hearings on the eighteenth. And Finance hasn't met uh, since our last meeting, but they're meeting on Monday night at five-thirty.
Okay. The Board of Health met last week. They had a guest. We got a letter, uh, if you remember correctly, from somebody who's a master's student, public health, and wanted to voice their concern about the town not canceling Halloween. She came to the Board of Health meeting and also because of the, a couple of other items, Chief Illingsworth, the police chief was there. And um, so anyway, they, they had a good discussion and um, so, you know, it stayed as it was. And as we heard, there were no concerns about Halloween. Uh, they also talked about the CARES Act budget as well as the operational budget. Um, they're dealing with some housing issues. Uh, there's a pretty good-sized increase in perk test and inspections. Uh, they voted to reduce the fees for the two restaurants that we have in town. A lot of towns are doing that just out of consideration for the difficulty that restaurants are having. Uh, the Council of Aging met yesterday and uh, they are not open, but I have to tell you that they are tremendously active. Uh, they're working on a food distribution to seniors and veterans. Uh, they're, uh, they're discussing the CARES Act, um, budget and items. They're very active with uh, pickleball, Tai Chi, bingo, diamond paintings. So they're doing some virtual programs. Uh, they're still providing van rides and they sent out eleven-hundred-and-forty newsletters um, to seniors. So very busy and active. Um, the director also went to a, uh, MCOA, Massachusetts Council on Ages, virtual conference uh, and got a lot of, um, out of that. So that's what's happening with the COA. Um, if nobody has any other questions, we'll move on to the Select, uh, the Town Administrator Report.
All right, uh, just to let you know, Judy has sent out all the liquor license and M and Victular renewal letters and renewal information. Uh, they need to be signed by the business owners during the month of November and returned here to the Select Board Town Administrator's Office. Uh, the Select Board will have these on their meeting agenda in December for approval. Uh, we have been informed of a small leak in the boiler at the library. Their HVAC vendor did some research and found a product that maybe added to the water in the boiler that will help fill that crack and leak and hopefully help us get through the existing winter months ahead of us with that, um, that boiler. Uh, the replacement of the boiler will need to be on the capital request as a priority replacement item fiscal year twenty-two budget process. And just to let you know that the uh, the HVAC, the HVAC vendor, uh, did uh, add that product to the uh, the water in the boiler today over there. So then they will be keeping an eye on it to see if uh, there is any water still leaking out of it and getting on the floor. Uh, the Highway Department, twenty-twenty-one Freightliner Dump Plow Truck, which was approved and ordered after last year's annual town meeting and election delivered. Here in the town hall parking area during Tuesday's election was a sign on it thanking our Southampton voters for approving the borrowing of funds uh, to purchase this truck and approval of it as a debt exclusion item. The election seemed to go very well here at the town hall for the polls. Everything was well organized and the voters came in and voted fairly efficiently. It was, it was short lines except at seven AM when there were forty people in line waiting to vote. Uh, the parking lot was filled for most of the day. Lucy Dalton, Town Clerk, and the election staff did a great job keeping things moving and also with handling all the mail-in voting as well as the early voting. Uh, let's see. There was a very nice two-thirds photo piece in the October twenty-ninth, November fourth edition of The Reminder on page six, which shows the Halloween event uh, that the library hosted at Conan Park Pavilion, at which children and their families made crafts and received treats. And then I'd like to remind our residents that the Water Commissioners have put into place voluntary water restrictions. A, limit all non-essential water use and no outdoor automatic sprinkler use between the hours of seven AM and seven PM, seven days a week. B, please restrict outdoor water usage to no more than two days per week. Uh, we hope this will result in a reduction in water use. If not, they will have to consider implementation of mandatory water restrictions. Uh, we thank you in advance for helping us conserve and protect our water supply. Uh, then also would like, uh, to remind our residents and businesses that the Southampton Water Department will be conducting our Southwest Area Water System Flushing Program, starting on Wednesday, October seventh, and running through mid-November twenty-twenty. I believe it's scheduled to uh, be completed on November seventeenth. Uh, during this time, the Water Department will make every effort to minimize system disruption. However, you may experience pressure fluctuations and some during the flushing process. If discoloration occurs, running the cold water for a short duration should clear it up. If the problem persists, please feel free to contact the Water Department at four-one-three-five-three-two-four-two-nine or email watersuper@town.org. We apologize in advance for any inconvenience that this may cause. The Water Department thanks you for your cooperation and understanding during this important maintenance process. And uh, the Phase Two CARES Act application was placed, was placed on Friday, October thirtieth. Uh, more concerning the application later in the meeting as an agenda item. Excuse me. Then upcoming, uh, Select Board meetings in November, the seventeenth, and Select Board meetings in December, the first and the fifteenth. And that's it.
Any questions for Ed? Thank you, Ed.
You're welcome.
Okay, two, two um, old business items. The first is ninety-three College Highway Purchase and Sale Agreement. There was a email that came in today with, I believe, the final copy of that, Ed.
Well, the copy of the deed. So I, I put the purchase and sale agreement under old business, just so you know that uh, the Select Board had uh, approved that and signed it. Uh, the Fletchers have also signed it, so that's complete. It's in your packet. Uh, the purchase and sale leads us to the deed. And I don't know if you want to move the discussion on uh, approval, approving the deed uh, for signing up to this point or wait for till later in uh, the meeting. I know uh, the Fletchers are on uh, the Zoom meeting. And I did send out the uh, the deed with one minor uh, edit, uh, probably around uh, five o'clock this afternoon. And Katie Klein had noted that the Fletchers, as of this point, had not approved the deed, but recommended that the Select Board move forward with uh, voting to approve and authorize your signatures on that. Quick Claim Deed, which was sent out with that one small edit on uh, identifying the property that the Fletchers owned in it.
We had approved it. Um, this is Cheryl, Twenty-two Gun Road. We had approved it this afternoon with Attorney Penny.
Okay.
But if there's been changes, I just would like to know what they were.
Uh, the one change in it was that it changed so it identified your property at the bottom of the first page. Uh, let's see. The sentence, I'll read the whole sentence. "The town of Southampton has the obligation to operate and maintain the drainage facilities in a manner similar to other such drainage facilities in the town of Southampton, so as not to damage, including not limited to causing erosion on the premises conveyed hereunder to the grantee or neighboring land belonging to Robert S. Fletcher and Cheryl A. Fletcher." And then what was uh, edited was it changed it to read "located at Gun Road and College Highway, Southampton, Mass."
Okay. So KP has already reviewed this?
Yes.
Okay.
They're the ones that uh, uh, actually developed it uh, in the first place. And I've then sent it along to Attorney Penny.
Okay. Uh, does anybody have any questions or comments on the deed?
No, if the attorney's okay with it, uh, I'm okay with it.
Would someone like to make a motion then to um, approve the deed?
I'll move to approve the deed.
I'll second it.
Yellow property.
Is there any further questions regarding um, the deed for this property? Okay, all those in favor?
Tishman eye.
Art nine.
And Groden eye.
Foul's abstain.
Okay. And the current.
Now, the next thing is, I have I, I uh, will have to get your signatures uh, on this and then have it notarized. And Lucy's taking some time off. So um, I am willing to chase around tomorrow to get uh, the majority of signatures on this, if you're available. Reenie, I can chase you around, or I could also put it in the Select Board's uh, mailbox in the break room here at Town Hall if you are able to like stop on your way to work in the morning and sign it.
Yeah, absolutely. You don't have to run around. I'll take, I'll, I'll step in.
Yeah.
Does Lucy, does Lucy have to notarize individual signatures or just a total document later?
No, she'll, she'll actually notarize uh, the three or four signatures that I get on it, um, after the fact in this case. So you don't, you don't have to come and sign it in front of her. I'll get the signatures and bring it back to her.
And I'll, I'll swing by and sign it to, tomorrow.
Yeah, I've got a couple of morning commitments, but I can swing by after lunch.
Great, alright.
So is there a date then? Is a date firm for the closing then?
It's Tuesday at ten o'clock in the morning.
That's fantastic.
And the party follows right after that, Cheryl?
Party at the farm.
Well, we sure appreciate all the hard work getting it done, so.
Well, it's been a long time coming, but I'm so glad it's um, finally coming, happening. So, thanks a lot, everybody.
Okay.
And we'll take care of that tomorrow. Lucy's in tomorrow? Ed, is Lucy in tomorrow?
She's in tomorrow and I'm in tomorrow, so, oh, yeah, uh, we'll get, we'll get it. That's right. I want to chase around and get everything. Take some time off next week, so.
Yeah, we want Lucy to take some time off next week. So let's go, I'll get it done tomorrow. Thanks so much. Okay, so the other old, uh, uh, thank you, Cheryl.
Okay, thanks.
Old business um, item is um, the Doors During Communities Grant update.
Uh, yes, and I'll just, just let you know that uh, after their original uh, trip out here to do the uh, take a look at the buildings and um, note the square footage and what have you, we have gotten everything except I have one uh, set of fuel oil bills from the highway to garage uh, to get to them. But other than that, we've gotten them the ever-source bills or uh, whole-yield gas and electric, or um, if they happen to heat with fuel oil, um, the fuel oil bills for the properties they were looking at. I know they have uh, a mechanical uh, audit scheduled to come back and look at the boilers in the police station uh, next week. So they're moving along with that.
Maybe they should look at the boiler in the library.
Yeah.
They, well, they actually had, had looked at that when they were here originally. Uh, and he took some pictures of it, so they may be all set in that, uh, but uh, we shall see. But we shall see.
Okay, yeah, we got to keep that moving along then. Thank you. So, any questions about that? Then let's move on to our pretty lengthy new business list. So Technology Committee, I think we're all set with that. The next is the election update. I think we talked about that. Anything more to say about the election?
I mean, I just want to add what Ed said about Lucy and her group. I mean, I think they've done a great job, and Lucy really communicated well on the community page of what was going on and the final results and all that. So I just want to shout out to those folks.
Yeah, that was part of our initial gratitude out to Lucy at the beginning of the day. Yeah, so, but no, I think we can second that anytime.
Yes, absolutely.
Yep.
And I will say, I was very surprised at how steady and busy it was here with actual voting on Tuesday, with all the activity for early voting and all the mail-in ballots they sent out and got back. I figured it would be pretty quiet, so I was very impressed. I figure we have to be up in Southampton, it had to be somewhere like a 75% or 80% voter turnout here, which is fantastic.
It was 88%.
Yep.
Yeah, that's remarkable.
It was in the Gazette today, yeah.
Yeah, that's incredible. So
Yeah, so it's beginning.
The next is a renewal of the Code Red agreement, and we kind of looked at this last time, and we wanted some clarification on the amounts year to year, and we got that in the packet.
Yes.
Yeah, and I'm just waiting for them to send back the new invoice. But I reached out to them and explained their circumstance. So they are willing to do the three-year agreement for the same amount of money over the three years, which is $12,285, but realizing that we only have $3,900 in the first year of making the first-year payment, $3,900, and then adjusting the second and third-year payments by half of the difference of what the first year would have been, which I think, if my memory serves me right, comes out to $41,9250, I think, in year two and year three. So that will let us enter into and renew the agreement and live within our budget constraints for fiscal year '21. So the board is willing to vote to approve that. When I do get the adjusted renewal letter and invoice, I will set it aside and have Reenie sign it. Or you can authorize me to sign it on behalf of the board.
Did anybody have any questions about the document, the amounts? Okay. Would someone like to make a motion?
I move to approve the Code Red service agreement and authorize Ed to sign
Great.
the document when it's finalized.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, Francine, and then John, any more discussion? All those in favor of signing off on the Code Red renewal?
Tishman, I.
Fowles, I.
Martin, I.
And Broden, I. I just have a question. Ed, you, so good job with all the broadcast messages. So is there anybody else that is authorized to put out messages? I know the school has something separate, but you're pretty much the one that's putting out messages on Code Red, right?
Pretty much so. The police chief is authorized to do so. My memory is that the water superintendent is authorized to do so. I have to go back and refresh my memory to see if there is anyone else that is authorized to do so. And we do have some people that are voice shy and don't have to send out messages very often, and I'm happy to basically have them put the message together, you know, for me, tell me what they want to say, and basically I record the message and send it out on their behalf.
I just had a question. I'm just wondering with so many people now with cell phones, whether we need to put out just a reminder to people if they want to sign up, that they need to make that and be more proactive on that? I mean, many people have given up their landlines that might have been around and don't think about giving their cellphone information. So maybe we should just sort of reach out and make it known a little bit on our website, or even in a meeting, more what Code Red does and why it's to their advantage to sign up. I don't know if that's an issue, but.
And it may be a good time, not only due to cell phones, but people moving and whatever to both in and out to make a push to try to get people to, you know, either sign up for that or add their cell phones to it, or what have you. Because I will tell you, there is a good number of, shall we say, telephone calls that go out that don't get connected.
Yeah, well, I think especially as we enter the winter months, I think it would be probably a good idea in case there's some other kind of a snow emergency or something like that. But I guess, how would people, how do people have to sign up? Is there something online they have to do, or what do they need to do?
It's right on the, it's right on the website.
On the Code Red page.
And I'm not looking at it right now, but I believe, I believe it's in the second line of the tabs that go across that say, like, you know, government, documents and forms, blah, blah, blah. I think it's in the second line, but the first item on the left, and I believe it's like news and events, and it also has that Code Red signup in there. So they basically end up clicking to go to the Code Red signup, and they can go in and, you know, they can sign up, you know, just for phone call at their house if they have a landline. They can, you know, list their cellphone, if, you know, or both, and they can actually also list out if would also like to get those turned into text messages, so.
Yeah, it's right under the news. Yeah, just looking at it right now, it's right under the news and events. But it would be good, I mean, some people might not be aware of it, so good to highlight a little bit.
Yeah, absolutely.
We can put things in that reminder. You could ask them to put some notification with that information in. That's another way of getting the word out.
Yeah.
Yeah, and on the community page.
Yeah.
I was gonna say, social media also.
Yep.
Good.
Okay, all right, so the next agenda item, I believe, if I can get back to it, is the CARES Act funding. So just wanted to also say thank you to Chris Fowles and Ed Gibson, who were there late Friday, putting all that together and meeting with all the different departments and pulling that together was a huge help this time around to have a little bit more distribution of the requests and get in on time. So, Chris, do you want to start by talking about that a little bit?
I'll talk about the process a little bit perhaps, but Ed can go through the numbers if you want. You guys have got the, sorry for the extra paperwork in your package. I just thought that next set of sheets would be more clear. Basically, as you know, we had some $223,000 that had been allocated the first round. And as we were looking at it fairly recently, Ed had given us a rough idea of expenses incurred and various departments, and said, "Well, that was a priority back in July, but it's not so much of a priority now," or "I want to change something out." So there were various manipulations that had to happen with the first round money that had not been drawn down very much. So we spent time looking at all the first round requests and figuring out, based on what people had told us, too, ones that they no longer wanted. They wanted to just remove it and just forget it. And so we spent some time looking at some of those, as well as ones we thought probably weren't going to qualify for the CARES Act money, as it all had to be COVID-related. Simple one, and no surprise, Lucy had put in a wish list of her ballot machine. Nice, we'd eat it, but not, that's going to be a hard sell for COVID. So that kind of thing got eliminated, for example. And then people had come in, we'd had, with Ed's leadership, we had two or three different meetings at Town Hall with the various department heads, where they came in with their second-round ideas and did some brainstorming and kind of put together a list from their perspectives, each department, as to what their needs were. And so then we had a real, real big challenge to try and combine everything. And just to say, this time, just to let you know, we've got, we've got requests in from police, highway, fire, the Nora School, Board of Health, the EMD, Council on Aging, the Building Department, the Town Hall Central itself, the Treasure Collector, the Town Clerk, the Ag Committee, the Community Cupboard, the Housing Committee, the Library, and then Parks Department as part of, it was under the Board of Health on the first round. So we really broadened out the reach to various entities in town that probably could benefit from this. And everybody was really responsive and came together with their lists. And so then Ed and I spent time, and Caitlin was part of one of the meetings that we were at, too, kind of going through all these and trying to figure out, okay, out of round one, what isn't going to be spent? What's no longer wanted? What stays, and then therefore what money is available to transfer shift to round two? So that we can not only have new requests for round two, but then build in the money that had already been awarded in round one to sort of fill in the gap. So that's what we spent a lot of time trying to do and understand, and that's what took a lot of time. And we came together, I think, with a pretty full final list, which is kind of on that second set of spreadsheets you got in your packet tonight, where each department is kind of featured on its own sheet now with what I'll call the budget, for lack of anything else. It's basically what was approved in round one that stayed, as well as their asks for round two that we either, sometimes we had to reduce because it didn't fit in the amount of money we had available, or in some of the round-two requests, too, they were just eliminated. We were running out of money, and we did the best we could to figure out and talk to people, too, in terms of what was their real priority. If they had to choose between A and B, what's their choice? If we can only do one, what do you want, kind of thing? And so we did our best to try and go through those and come up with our final numbers. And so, working with Ed, we managed to get those inputted in the famous computer application system on Friday. And I guess we're still, we have to wait a little bit for some approvals, Ed, and I'll let you take it from there. But I think our big challenge now, because it's still, until we know otherwise, things still have to be spent and/or received by December 30th, not the 31st, but the 30th. We're hoping that some things will, you know, the timeframe would be extended, because obviously COVID's not going anywhere. And some of the requests, you know, we kind of did try to look a little bit into the future on this as best we could. But, you know, procurement on some of the bigger items is going to be our real hurry-up challenge to get stuff, you know, in the pipeline and procured now in time to get it. So I'll just turn it over to Ed, and if you want to go into numbers, we can do that. But you've got them in front of you. But basically, we've requested everything that we were allowed to request for, I think, and probably then some. Ed?
Yeah, thanks for all your help with this, Chris. It was definitely a huge help, and you got to see some of my frustration of just taking the from the raw numbers as they were requested, and then actually having to take them and fit them into the categories on the actual application, which was fun. And then towards the end, we had actually a good number of requests from the departments that actually didn't fit anywhere else and fell into others. So we ended up actually not having enough lines in the others. So some of those requests by department ended up getting grouped together on one line in the Excel spreadsheet. So I know we're going to get some questions back from the state about those exactly. But we got it done, and we were considerably over our allocated funding level. I think we were like $75,000 or $80,000 over as we were putting in all the requests. So, you know, we did have to take a look at, okay, you know, what were real priorities? What had certain departments gotten, you know, already or in this round? And maybe other departments hadn't gotten anything. So it was very interesting, to say the least, but it got done, and I thought it got done in a good and fair way also. So, you know, thanks to Chris and the other members of the committee for helping with that along the way. Now, do you want to go through the Phase Two request by the actual requests and the numbers?
Well, that would be, I mean, what do you think? I mean, it seems like we don't know yet about, what I'd like to know, first of all, is how do we know which ones are FEMA reimbursable? Or FEMA reimbursable?
There are definite categories that things fit into that you know right off the bat if they're FEMA, and they're going to be reduced by 75%. And then there are other categories. There are some things that are in the other category that are going to end up that are FEMA reimbursable and will be reduced by 75%. And there are some in there that are not FEMA reimbursable, and we will get 100% of the funds that we requested in those. So probably the final piece will be once the state gets back to us on the approval of the application. If everything's been approved, or some things have gotten out, we will be able to make a list of, okay, this item should be FEMA reimbursable, we're going to have to keep track of that, and also request reimbursement from FEMA and the items that are not FEMA reimbursable that we make sure that we request 100% of that funding back from the CARES Act. But there are some that are in the gray area. I mean, right now, just from taking a look at the application process in particular, and how the categories were laid out, one of the items that Chris and I had gone back and forth on were the two items from the Nora School, one being some of the technology that was already done in the spring, which they had requested $49,000. It was like $951 or $591 for reimbursement. And then they had also requested $117,000 to make the classrooms so that they all could have, each classroom could broadcast remotely, if need be, of adding the technology to them. They had requested, I think it was $117,000 for that. That was one of the items we had to slightly cut back on, and I think we ended up with like $106,000 and some change in there. But there was an app, there was a category in the actual CARES Act application that we looked at, that we were wondering if those would fit into the remote technology. And as we got into it, it was clear that because the remote technology they were referencing was basically core, like, you know, Town Hall or Fire Department or, you know, police first responder remote technology, that this did not fall into that category. Now, that category that they had in the core municipal services for remote technology was- for remote technology was FEMA reimbursable. So I am pretty much convinced, but will know when we get our approval back, that, that remote technology that request, we requested for Nora School, if it's approved, I'm about 98% or 99% sure that'll be 100% reimbursement. And then there, there are things like PPE that's requested for first responders, that should be FEMA reimbursable and reduced by 75%. There's, there's a piece in the application that Chris had pointed out, where anything purchased in PPE, I believe it's after September 15th, for non-first responders probably will not be FEMA reimbursable, which means that anything that we put in for PPE that wasn't for first responders in this Phase Two CARE Act, you know, whether it be for like the school, you know, for, you know, here in Town Hall or whatever, that should be 100% reimbursable through this, this CARES Act, rather than 25% CARES Act and 75% FEMA.
Yep.
So what does the committee want to do? It's a pretty long list. That's only, that's my concern. I don't know if we want, it would take at least a half an hour to go through.
Yeah.
It would be fine, I think, once we find out that it's funded to actually to, to read out what's been funded. But I think to, for this just being in the application.
Yeah.
I guess I'm a little weary of spending over a half an hour on what was requested.
Yeah, I, I would agree with that, honestly. And I think just to say that out of the, the first, the first round, as we looked at things that had not been spent and or were not needed anymore, whatever, we had probably somewhere between $65,000 and $70,000 that we actually shifted to round two, that we, you know, if there was a request in round two from, say, the Fire Department, and they had something in round one that they were not going to use, we tried to use that money within the same departments and shift it to cover some of those costs. So, you know, we, we did try to be attentive to what had been allocated, what was already being used or planned to be used versus what was no longer needed. And tried to use those funds too, as well as request new money. So I think we've done the best we can do. We'll see, I'm, I'm hoping, I don't know how long we have to wait for any kind of approval, but I, I think we need to be clear with those that had money from their first round, that they need to, they can work on spending their first round. They need to get the first round money that was allocated and approved to them, that, you know, they can talk to Ed about what that was. But I mean, they, they need to get moving and spend it. So.
And they're already doing with that, that with the items that were in round one that they still intend to move forward with. So they are moving forward with those.
Yep. And in general, is, is it anything under $5,000 or under $10,000? Can they kind of move without too much getting multiple invoices and things, Ed? Remind me of that, so that if anybody's listening, they, they remind them.
Anything, well, if you're, if you're doing business, if you're doing business with one vendor or, you know, you've got one item or a number of items that are in the same category, you're dealing with that one vendor on. Basically, the rules of thumb are if it's $1,000, it's best business practices.
How much, sorry?
If it's between $10,000, it's best business practices.
Under $10,000?
Yeah. Yep. And then between $10,000 and $49,999,99, it's obtain three quotes. Or if, if there's like a state contract or on it, you can use the state contract to purchase it. And once you hit the $50,000 and over mark, it is basically sealed bids or you can go back and take a look and see if a state contract will cover that in, in something in the manner of that's over $50,000. But other, other than the school technology stuff, which I don't know if they're getting it off, they, they said they were going to get, that, that was on, I'll double check, but they had said that that was through contract. But the only item, item or items I can think of on here would have been the Nora School technology that a grouping would have been above $50,000.
I have a question. There is no risk here that we go ahead and, and purchase something and find out after the fact that it would be disallowed? And then that leaves us obviously out the money that we paid.
No, that's part of the application process when they come back. They'll come back and like I say, they will, they will ask questions on some of the stuff that's in there. And they have the ability and they will bounce items that are not eligible, whether it be through FEMA or themselves, and bounce those out. But once it is approved, you know, we're good to go.
Okay.
And I guess I'm, I'm hoping, Ed, correct me if I'm wrong, but since we have a, a contact at MEMA, that if maybe by Monday, Tuesday, we don't hear anything from them, that we reach out to them and sort of see what's, what's up? I mean, that would already bring us to like the 10th of November, which is, this time is going to go by so quickly to the end of December. I'm afraid of not getting it all spent.
All right, Chris, you said it had to be received or just a PO has to be out?
Received.
No, we have to receive it by December 30th, under the current rules and regulations.
Unless they change.
I mean, I, I still, and I, yeah, I mean, at, at some point, I am 98% convinced that they will change the rules and change the dates. I think at some point it's going to be put out to June 30th, 2021. I do whether that's going to be later this month or in December, or if it's going to end up being in January.
Yeah.
Yeah, I can't imagine they're not going to push it out. But for now, we have to go with what, what they're putting in there.
Right.
Right.
So I would encourage, I guess, anybody, I know that there was a couple of things that were not included in this application. And I would encourage those department heads to consider making those requests at the annual town meeting or at some future date. I don't want to discourage anybody who feels like their department is in need of something. I was thinking in one particular item with the Fire Department, I just hope that they would be encouraged to consider alternative sources of funding if nothing else comes available.
What I'm, I'm thinking, I'm hoping too, that part of the work of this, the ADAP Grant Committee, which we could use another member or two on, you know, would be to also be looking for other kinds of funding for, you know, not necessarily COVID related things, but anything that might help out any department in town.
Okay. Well, Chris, thank you again for all your work and also Ed, Charlie and Caitlin's help. But thank you, in particularly you two, for all your work on that application and all the trying, you know, the process went so much better this time and it was so widely shared. So hopefully they'll, they'll fund it all, all the requests. And then perhaps when we do hear for sure, then we can share that information about what was actually funded and what was reimbursed by FEMA. Everybody okay with that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Can I just chime in about the format? I think the format that is the second iteration of this, where it's just the CARES Act by department, there is much more comprehensible than trying to follow the application. I mean, if we're going to put it out there for people.
Yeah.
I think it's, it's easier to look at that version.
No, and that first, that first set of spreadsheets was really more our internal iteration of, okay, here's round one and round two per department. This isn't needed anymore. We removed it, there's money left, we're going to shift it. So this was showing our, our process.
The result of that, okay.
Probably was more confusing than it was worth. So that's why I wanted you to have the, the final version.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks, everyone. So the next item is the COVID-19 update. Ed sent out a memo to the Select Board about our Monday morning meeting with, well, not everybody is ever on the call, but basically the, the COVID-19 update. As you know, there's uptick in a lot of communities, including Southampton. I think we're officially now in yellow. And so.
Yes, we are.
So we have to remember that this, you know, we're heading in. I was told today at work that this is absolutely the perfect time to get a flu shot because of, it takes a few weeks to kick in and it's going to be the most maximum coverage when mostly needed. So just encourage people to consider doing that. And to consider, you know, we have a new state guidance around curfew. But most importantly, to maintain the original hand washing, social distance and wearing a mask. What else would you like to say, Ed? Anything?
Yeah, I'd just like to, you know, I had said some, some things in that update. Just like to remind the Select Board again that on Monday, Governor Baker announced some changes to business openings, private gatherings, wearing of facial masks, what have you. As actually as of, I hope you don't keep me here that late tonight, but as of 12:01 AM tomorrow morning, there is a stay at home advisory in place between 10:00 PM and 5:00 AM. And unless you are traveling. And yeah, unless, unless you're working, traveling to a grocery store, you know, going, going to get medications, what have you. That's one of the pieces of the new puzzle, trying to keep people home and away from some of the social situations that are garnering some of the bad behavior. Another piece of that is we have been used to wearing our facial coverings or facial masks, pretty much so, whether it's in public or in a, in a business, when you are closer than six feet from someone, as long as you could, social distance and be six feet or further apart, you were okay without that facial covering, beginning at 12:01 tomorrow morning, when we're out in public, whether we're three feet, 10 feet or 100 feet from, you know, someone, when you're out in public, you're supposed to have that facial covering, covering on. You know, so when, you know, I go out for my walks, I used to take a facial, a facial mask with me. And if I was, you know, coming up to somebody coming the other way or going to pass them or whatever, I put the mask on. Now, from step one, whether there's anybody out there or not, I'm supposed to have that facial mask on. So the governor, and I think rightfully so, keeps, keeps pushing that those facial coverings are probably our number one defense against the spread of the coronavirus. And then also, it kind of goes along with that theory of the stay at home advisory, but businesses such as theaters, gyms, and I'll forget something, and restaurants are now basically required to close at 9:30 PM, which again is to keep, the theory being of getting people home by 10:00, 10:00 PM. Restaurants, if you're seated and placed your order, eating past 9:30, but there are no new food orders to be placed or processed after 9:30 PM, if you're seated, those restaurants can between 9:30 and 10:00, still take a takeout order and let you come in and get that takeout order. But if you're seated in that restaurant and eating, will not, you'll be able to finish your meal after 9:30, but you cannot place an order or place additional orders after 9:30 PM. The, and then the order for private gatherings, private gatherings indoors has been reduced to 10, not more than 10. And private gatherings outdoors has been reduced to no more than 25. There are certain events that still go by the business, business regulations. So if, if you are having like a wedding reception or whatever, that 25 number, and you're having it at a, at a public place, that 25 number is actually higher. But they are really trying to cut down on private, private parties, gatherings, people staying out, you know, late and gathering together, which they are seeing as actually driving this uptick in the COVID positives, not only here in Massachusetts, but in, in other states. And I don't know if you saw the numbers for today, but the numbers they released today, we thought it had increased when it was around 1,000 a day because it was well under that and probably down around 500 summertime. Today's numbers that got released were 1,769 new cases of COVID-19 here in Massachusetts.
How many new deaths that?
Dan, I can't remember, to be honest.
I thought I heard 29. I thought I heard 29.
In the twenties, yep.
Yes.
General.
It is, we're almost at 10,000.
And then, yeah, and I did sign on to, the governor and lieutenant governor had a briefing this afternoon for the MMA. And, you know, he, like I say, he is preaching wearing that mask as much as possible, that it's the number one defense. You know, he, he was also commenting that Massachusetts is frequently on a weekly basis, probably the number one state in the nation as far as pushing the testing and the number of tests that are done on a daily basis. He said that the only other two states that even come close, and sometimes they'll rotate as the one, as, as far as the numbers of testing being done on a weekly basis, is New York and Rhode Island. But those three are far ahead of everybody else as far as the testing goes.
I know everybody at my work is being tested every two weeks minimum.
I know some people had gone over to Hoyo Community and the line was quite long. Quite long, apparently, to get tested over there. But I also saw something that I, I meant to bring it up, but I forgot. But there's been a notice out, I think, about recruiting volunteers for contact tracing training. I saw something about that, which I'll try to remember for the next meeting, if it's useful.
I just saw that they hired, hired back 305 contact tracing people. I think it was last week.
Uh huh, okay.
Who hired them, the state?
Yeah, I believe so.
And they're being, and they're being assigned to towns and cities?
No, this is for the, the state level. Because, because they had, they had a ton of contract tracers back in April, May, June. And then as they got into the summer and the numbers dropped off, they had let a good number of those people go. But now the numbers are going up again fairly quickly and they're trying to keep up with that contract tracing.
Very, very sad. We have to keep, we have to keep our vigilance. It's just a very sad disease too. We've taken care of quite a few people that have passed from COVID and I have to say that it's complicated. Anything else on COVID? And let's talk about.
Not that I have.
Okay, so revenue and expenditures, we didn't get. We didn't get updates. Would you like to say anything about that, Ed?
No, we do not. We have not gotten a new update since that last one that we had at our last meeting.
Can you speak to, it was my understanding that FY20 was going to be closed out before Vicki left and that did not happen. Was there a reason why that happened and what will be the plan for that to happen? Or do you want to talk about that later on?
Correct. Yeah, yeah, there, there's a number of items that still need to be done to close out fiscal year 20, fiscal year 20. And that will be part of the process of getting either an interim or a permanent town accountant in here to complete. And it might be under the the interim or the temporary town.
Okay. And are we held to a particular deadline at this particular moment?
Yes, we are because we have to actually probably close those out and move forward to be ready to actually set our tax rate and send out the tax bills. So we should have a target date of early December to finish that up.
Okay. Okay, so perhaps we can get, you know, that closing and update on FY21. Any comments about that? We do have a further on agenda item where we talk about the accountant situation.
Okay, all right, then I'll wait.
All right, so let's talk about the open space and recreation plan. I think the last thing that PBBC was waiting for was the ADA report.
Yeah, and I sent I sent it off to, and he has acknowledged receiving that and he's going to incorporate it into the the draft. And he's going to work on that over the next couple, couple of weeks and get that back back to us. So and I asked him to let me know if I had anything in there for those ADA surveys. But he's got that, he'll incorporate it, he'll send a draft off to the state, he'll send the draft, the updated draft back to us to post on our website also.
Okay, so the the goal is, I hope still that we would get that done by the end of the year and that the other things that's still on is letters of support. I think also a public hearing, correct? Is that right, Ed?
Oh, there's letters of support, select board, conservation commission, planning. I'll have to go back and check on the public hearing, public hearing portion.
And all that happens once we get it back from the state?
All that can happen once we've actually got the the draft.
Okay, but that is, that's once we get it back.
Yeah, I'm scheduled to go to Concom on at their next meeting, which I think is the, okay.
16th.
We're the 17th, so I think they're the 16th and do a presentation at that meeting. And I will, they have a draft of the letter of support. So I will ask them if they will fill that out when doing the presentation. And I'm also going to reach out to the planning board and get on their agenda to do a presentation for them and also ask them for if they would be willing to complete that template of support letter for us.
Okay, great. Any questions about the open space and recreation plan? All righty, the next is the municipal preparedness planning grant.
Yes, and now that the OSRP is off the table, I'll move forward with that. I started to reach out to some of the boards and committees to see if they have anybody that's willing to serve on that as the core team. And I will also be reaching out to the pertinent departments to be part of that core team.
And does this particular grant spell out exactly which departments? I know it's similar to the open space and recreation plan, but does it spell out who should be involved?
Yes, it does. Yeah. Health, emergency management, conservation.
Planning, I'm sure.
I think I just got a survey.
I can't remember. Yeah. I'm not sure if planning is specifically mentioned in the core team or the expanded team, so I'll go back and refresh my memory. Select board, I know is representation is mentioned in the core team.
I thought I just got an email and it was actually from the Boston Regional Coordinator Municipal Vulnerability Preparedness Program. Originally, I thought, oh, maybe that came from, you know, locally, but it isn't. I think it's the broader program. So where are we at in terms of, I mean, is Fosun O'Neal, who is helping us with this? Are they just on standby until this committee is put together?
They've done some work already for us, but yeah, the next step is putting this committee together and getting going. They've actually developed the the outreach questions, much like was done with the OSRP. But yeah, they've done some work for us and then they'll work with us closely once this committee is put together to make sure all the steps are followed and done and that we get the feedback that we need from both the core team, the expanded team and the community.
Bill, I know I was part of the open space and recreation plan. I know Francine, you were also certainly willing to, you know, to be involved in the MVP group. I don't know if other people from the select board are also interested. Is there anybody that would wanted to put their hat in to be on that committee?
I think I'll I'll pass this time.
Okay, I mean, I'm willing, I'm willing to be the representative from select board if if nobody else, if people would like me to be.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think it'd be great, yeah. Do we have a sense, you know, what's what's sort of the time commitment on this? Just for other people, other boards that are going to have to suggest somebody? Are we talking, you know, over a three month period, six month period? What are we talking about?
I would say three to four months.
Now, Ed, my understanding is that, so this grant was received, it was submitted by Fosun O'Neal on our behalf. This next step is to actually put this committee together to decide on what project we would then put forward as a request for additional funds, correct?
No, it's actually the planning grant step. So what this this committee will do, much like the OSRP update committee did, is they will come back with a number of items and goals and maybe identify certain categories of projects that are important that the community and the committee thinks are into, whether it's prepare for climate change, flooding, natural disaster or what have you. And then what happens is you will take and use that planning that, well, it would actually be the municipal vulnerability plan that comes out of that. And then as grant opportunities come up, whether it's through MVP or other areas, you can use that MVP plan, plan to say, okay, we've got, you know, whether it's a large culvert or, you know, a river or, you know, something in town that we feel is very susceptible to flooding due to climate change and the increased storms and whatever. So you would take that category or that piece of the planning grant and say, okay, you know, we want to replace this this culvert or we want to improve the drainage in this part of town. And then when you apply for that grant, because it fits into that particular category, you have a higher opportunity or probability of actually getting funded for the grant.
Is there a cap on the dollar amount or it's kind of, or is it open ended?
It depends on basically each round and what the grants are that are coming up.
And the grant we already received is what the planning grant itself is 22,000, right?
But yes, that and that was 22,000, including, I think it was like 7,000 of that was to finish off the ORP.
Right.
Yeah, the next step is to.
I mean, yeah, as as an example, and we've already got funding to move forward with this is, you know, suppose we're through the planning process and one of the items that, you know, was identified in that municipal vulnerability plan was susceptibility to flooding and taking and its effect on water supply here in Southampton. If we didn't have the grant to replace, move, however you want to say it, the the water main here on Route 10 and the Manhan River Bridge, the town may be able to go out and say, okay, they're removing that dam. Because the dam is being removed, the water is going to flow more freely and stronger. You know, therefore, if we get a, I don't know, 100 year flood event or whatever, the Manhan River is going to over overflow or be susceptible of flooding. And because our water main is still within the river, it's going to have a probability or potential to be broken by that extra water flow. And then not only do we have flooding problems, but we have a decent portion of the town that does not have water supply.
Yeah, so that was that was kind of what I was saying, that the money that we got is for Fosun O'Neal to then facilitate a town survey and to review vulnerability around the theme of climate change. And then based on that, I thought then there was sort of an automatic funding that could then be applied for. But it sounds like once we identify priorities for funding, then we would look for additional funding on a broader scale. So I guess if people are okay with my being on this committee, then I would just ask to have a motion then to appoint me to that committee.
Okay, I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
Any other questions, comments, all in favor?
Tishman, I.
Falls, I.
Martin, I.
And Groden, I. So, Ed, what did you say?
I said, thank you.
Okay, sure. If you're going to be reaching out to the other committees and looking for members, just if you could just keep us in the loop and when a meeting would get pulled together.
Absolutely.
Great. Next on the agenda is
vacation pay.
Yeah.
Thanks, vacation pay. So this is approval of vacation pay accrued for the town accountant due to the resignation. If I'm not mistaken, I think it's 90 hours.
It's.
Let me get to it.
It's 134 hours.
Yeah, 90 hours at $34, $3,060.
Which is basically that two weeks plus the extra carryover. Any, would someone like to make a motion to approve the accrued vacation payout?
I'll make a motion, we approve it both for the town accountant and assistant town accountant, as long as it meets personnel policies.
Okay.
And I did check on that and what's currently in the manual. And it and it reads, whenever employment is severed, the employee shall be paid an amount equal to the vacation leave remaining, remaining that was granted in that fiscal year.
Yep.
So any anything after July 1st, any resignation or termination after July 1st, the person is entitled to the vacation for the entire year.
The full pay, yeah.
So it's not it's not prorated to the time work then?
No, but we've talked about that in the past, yeah.
Okay.
And that might be something Francine to bring up at PQB at some point.
Yes, when we.
Right now, you're right, that is the way it is.
Yes.
Francine, do you want to make that a second or are you just quantifying, qualifying the?
No, I'll make it a second. I just was explaining the.
Okay. Any further questions or discussion about both of these payouts on vacation? Okay, all in favor?
Tishman, I.
Falls, I.
Martin, I.
And Groden, I. So that brings us to the town accountant position. We have a job description, we have a PR, PCF. Who, Ed, would you like to?
We have, yeah, the PR, yeah, the PR, PRF is out there. The town accountant position and the interim town accountant position have both been posted. Have reached out to two temp agencies in regards to at least the interim town accountant position. Let's see. One agency has gotten back to me with their fees, schedule and client agreement, but they have not gotten, they didn't have anybody in specifically in mind for us. The other temp agency did have one possibility for us. It is one of their internal, shall we say, employees. But it, as you hire, as you hire their internal employees generally, they're looking for that normally are at least full time of 40 hours a week. In this case, they would be willing to, because the person might be doing some other company part time also, be willing to reduce that to 30 hours per week. In this particular case, the going rate, because you're paying for an employee at a shop rate, is $52 per hour, which if we decided to move forward with that, will eat up the budget that we have for hiring a permanent town accountant in no time at all. And I will will say that the individual that they had that was a possibility, has accounting experience, but it's not municipal accounting experience. So I don't know, we might be better served if I reach out to some of the accounting companies or maybe check with DOR and see if there are any retired town accountants out there that might serve us better.
And I was also thinking, what about the firm that does our auditing? Would they, you know, know, they may not have anyone, but they might know a source.
Well, they actually, they have gone into this business. So it, that's a possibility, but once you do that, they will no longer audit your books. So we'd have to find new auditors. So, I mean, and conversely, I might reach out and see if I can find another accounting auditing firm out there that offers this type of outsourcing.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
I think it's important...
What about neighboring towns? I mean, there's plenty of neighboring towns that are small enough that might have, uh, people able to do even a couple of days a week.
We used to share an account with West Hampton years ago. So maybe they have somebody.
I can reach out and see if, yeah, I can reach out to, uh, the surrounding communities and see if they've, you know, if they do have a part-time, uh, accountant, if they are looking or interested in to pick up some more hours.
Mm-hmm. It seems, no, I was just gonna say, it seems to me that somebody having that municipal experience is really probably important. I, I think, you know, we, we probably should, should err on the side of getting that, you know, as, as what we need. And if you said this, I apologize. Wasn't there some sort of a program, again, these regional things that PVPC does, that staffs some of these kinds of positions?
I don't remember PVPC specifically doing accounting. I know they do some other things like, uh, town, town administration and some others, but, uh, I can reach out and find out for sure.
I'm thinking, you know, when I first got on the select board, I attended a couple of their meetings and it seemed to me that there was some regional things that they were trying to do because that was such an issue with towns just not being able to find qualified accountants easily, that they were trying to source that as a, you know, small grouping of towns, not necessarily regional, but, you know, three, four towns together maybe. So...
Yeah, I know ACOG was doing that, but I don't remember PVPC, but I'll give them a call tomorrow and find out.
Okay.
Okay, so Ed, in the meantime, um, in terms of, you know, payment of bills, invoices and such, uh, what would you like to have happen?
That's one of my concerns and, uh, just to keep things moving forward, um, I mean, vendor warrants, payroll warrants have to be signed off by the accountant also. Um, and, you know, there's contracts that come in that may need to be signed off. PR, PRFs and PCFs need to be, um, signed off as far as available funds go. Um, I did reach out to both the DOR to see if they had any restrictions, uh, as far as the, uh, town administrator also serving as a town accountant. Uh, DOR said, oh, uh, but check with legal counsel just to make sure that, uh, there's nothing in, you know, contrary to that in the law, bylaws, uh, or anything else. I did reach out to KP, uh, Law and Shell said, no, uh, that is a possibility. Uh, it can be done. That, uh, on Mass General Laws, Chapter 41, Section 4, um, the select board would be able to, uh, name the town administrator, myself, uh, as, uh, the, as, uh, an ex officio part of the town administrator duties to be the interim town accountant. And I will be honest with you, I'm not necessarily looking, go up there and sit up there and, um, you know, and enter bills daily basis or whatever. Uh, but I think, uh, for a period of time, a little week, whatever, just to keep, like, things moving forward as far as payroll goes, um, and vendor payments that, uh, you know, might really be an emergency to get taken care of, whether that's, you know, debt service or some other things, or sign off on PRFs and PCS to keep those moving forward. Um, I think it would be a, uh, good move to do for the very, very short term. Conversely, I will tell you, under Chapter 41 and Section either 50 or 55, our alternative, uh, would be that you, um, are able to name the town clerk as the interim town accountant.
Town clerk as opposed to town treasurer?
That's my statute, yeah, yes.
Wow.
That seems a little odd.
Yeah, it does.
It seems odd, but, uh, what do you, uh, what is the, I mean, obviously payroll has to happen. Um, my, my inclination would be that we would, um, do something, but only for a very short amount of time. I mean, we need to, like, not, um, I mean, we need to get an emergency appointment ASAP.
Yeah.
I mean, even if we had a town to share with, two days a week or three days a week would be much, much better because that person could take care of the key issues, you know?
Yeah.
Um, loading this onto another employee seems like it's, it's not going to go well, you know?
Yeah, it's just, it's just too much in my mind. But we...
Well, like I say, right now for the very, very short term, I'm just looking for covering the stuff that needs to be done.
Now, when Joyce comes back on beginning of December, she can take over those critical roles?
Well, she can, she'd be able to move through with the entering, uh, the, you know, the vendor payments and whatever onto the warrant. We should still have, whether it's an interim or a, uh, permanent town accountant over that that's responsible for those sign-offs.
Yeah, well, hopefully we can get one by then.
Yeah. I mean, because we'll have a payroll and a vendor warrant between now and the beginning of December, right? So...
Yes, yeah.
What would you like to do?
So what's, what's the very short term you're talking about, Ed? I mean, you're talking like December 15th or what are you talking about, a month?
I'm hoping it's just like a couple of weeks.
Yeah, I was thinking only like if the, at the latest, uh, December, uh, November 30th.
Okay.
I mean, not that, I like the idea, but I'll make the motion that we appoint Ed, uh, to take over those duties until the end of November. The reason I don't like it is because I think we're piling on too much to one person, but I don't think we have no choice here.
But is there someone who can help you do your, do that, that would, like, volunteer?
Well, like I say, right now I'm just looking to do the sign-offs.
Yeah.
So, I mean, if, if something, and she just joined in the meeting, but, you know, in, in, in an emergency basis, like I say, if we've got things like debt or things like that that are coming up that we've got the money for, uh, Jen can probably help me actually put that into a vendor, vendor warrant, uh, for, for payment and soft right.
Okay.
Yeah, let me, let me ask something. And this maybe is not working. I know Jen works, I see her top of her head there. She, you work Fridays, right, in, in Goshen? But I'm, I'm wondering, is there part of a day on Friday that, you know, you could maybe help out here and, and part of a day in Goshen? Or is that not a doable idea to help do some of this coverage for the month to help Ed through this, this period till we get a permanent person? Or is that not real? I mean, I, I'm just asking.
I mean, I do generally spend a full day in Goshen. Um, I had wanted to work Monday to Friday for Southampton.
I remember that.
But right now, I mean, I, I mean, I need to spend the day in Goshen because, I mean, I need to keep that position and, you know, so I, last Friday I did spend in Southampton, so I'm not saying once in a while I can't. And like Ed said, I can enter, um, some, I can enter some invoices that we have to pay that, you know, we don't want to, like, get fees if things are overdue or if it's, um, debt service. I can help out with that.
Okay.
But as far as even when, if Joyce does get hired back for December 1st, as the assistant accountant, she is able to take over duties of the accountant office. So she can then sign off on warrants. She already does. Like, sometimes, you know, she signs off and Vicki doesn't. So she would be able to do that.
Okay. Thank you, Jen. I think we have a motion. I'm not sure if we have a second yet.
Gosh, I look so bad.
No, we don't.
We don't. Uh, I'll second it, sorry.
So just, just as a thought, I don't know if it's, anybody has asked her, but will Joyce be willing to come back earlier?
She can't.
Can't.
Oh, she has that one between?
Right, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, we have a motion and second, uh, for Ed to be a sort of ex officio, um, accountant in order to sign off on anything that's an emergency debt service or payroll warrant or such, um, or PCFs, PRFs. Any further questions, comments, suggestions?
I mean, the sign-off is there, but the process still stays in place.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, right.
Yeah, and hopefully we can, um, get somebody in. I mean, emergency can happen right away. Uh, it's for a two-week basis, so hopefully we can, um, get some, somebody else in that office. Are you ready to vote on that? All in favor?
Tishman, I.
Falls I.
Martin, I.
And Groden, I.
Who seconded that?
Uh, I think I did.
First, Ed. All right, thank you, uh, Jen and also Ed.
Yeah, I'll, then, once again, I'll just be clear, that's ex officio as part of my town administrator duty, so I'm not receiving any extra pay for that. Just to be clear.
Thank you. Hopefully it'll be for less than, uh, the rest of the month.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so next is the interim town accountant position. Was that, um, we didn't do that, we didn't do that along with the other one, correct?
We, we had because you just basically named me the interim town, uh, town accountant.
Okay.
Yeah, and, and then, is, is there, like, one or two select board members that might want to work with me as we get either, uh, possibilities back from, uh, the temp agencies or, uh, surrounding towns or, uh, resumes that come in?
Yeah, I'd be happy to do that if you want.
I, so I...
So John, uh, John and Francine will both help?
Okay, great. Thank you.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, so the next is the...
I will let you know that did receive one, uh, email of interest in the interim position. However, it went to my spam folder. So it took me a couple of days to find it. And then the other thing, because it went to the spam folder, it wouldn't let me open up the attachment of the resume. So I have emailed the individual back and asked them to resend, uh, the attachment.
Oh.
So you don't know if there's any pertinent experience with this person?
Hasn't seen the resume.
Uh, I haven't seen the resume as of yet.
Okay.
Okay, the next item agenda for we're ready to move on. Oh, by the way, on the job description, if you could just update, uh, the terminology there, I think it still says Board of Selectmen on the job descriptions.
Well, the jo, job descriptions would have been approved like back in 2017 or 2018. So, uh, I can send them back to PPPB at some point, but I probably don't want to send it back and mess up the postings or anything else.
Yeah, but I don't think, I mean, the town meeting voted on the change, so I actually need to go back to PQB for every single document. It's a simple change. I'm not saying it has to be changed for this current posting since there's a lot of urgency in getting that out. I'm just saying that that would be a good opportunity as they come up to make those changes. I don't think it needs to go back to PQB.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Yeah. All right, the next thing is the EMD posting. Uh, that's up on the website and my understanding is there's a couple of, uh, people have put their application in and...
Have received two, yes, two, uh...
Two applications.
Two, uh, two applicants have expressed their interest in it.
Good.
So, uh, just as a context, um, so the select board had voted to approve Charlie Kinnicki up until October 31st, and he has, um, uh, sort of said that, uh, that's sort of the end of that interim appointment. Um, I believe, uh, there's, that funding is still waiting to be officially paid out. But, um, at any rate, uh, this was funded out of CARES Act 1, and I don't know if it's also included in the application for two or if there's enough funds to go until the end of June, but we are still dealing with the, uh, what we talked about before, where the funds are supposed to be, um, used or paid out by the 30th of December. So this is one of the hopes that we have, that this will be able to extend into 2021. But right now, uh, this is the stipend position, um, out of CARES Act for funding for this position. The job description has been approved by PQB and it's already posted. So the next step is to, uh, interview or review the applications. Um, is there a closing date for applications or is that kind of now?
I don't think we had put a closing date, uh, on there. I mean, we can start reviewing the applications now and, you know, if we receive anything up through the next select board meeting, we can, uh, you know, review those all. But I mean, I would, I would think that, uh, it's been posted for a while now that, uh, going to, you know, we can pull it off and act on anything that comes in between now and then.
Okay.
If we, we do get anything additional.
Okay, well, right now, um, I have been in touch with the MEMA representative, um, Alan Phillips, and, um, he's, you know, offered in himself his availability to Southampton for whatever's needed. We talked before Halloween and also before the election about, you know, uh, just where things are at in terms of, uh, prevention of any problem. And obviously we know there were no concerns, but, you know, with us being in weather, you know, bad weather time and everything else, I think the sooner we can get someone officially in that position since, um, the, the position up till now ended 10/31. So I'm just wondering, um, I'm on the, uh, the call with the, uh, EMD folks on Monday. I don't know if there was another select board member that would like, um, to join me and Ed. I think we should include feedback from, uh, police and fire, if not, uh, Board of Health, the Health Director, and, um, you know, reviewing the, the two applications we have. Is there anybody else? Um, I mean, are you fine with, um, am I also being involved in reviewing, uh, those applications? Is anybody else interested in doing that?
Can we maybe switch off depending on if we have time on that, on a Monday? Or do you want somebody to say yes for every, everyone?
No, I was thinking, uh, no, I don't have a problem with doing that. It's kind of like every other Monday at 10 o'clock. I'm saying about reviewing the applications for the EMD position. Was there somebody else that would like to be part of that process?
Do you think maybe someone like the fire chief or the police chief who are also intimately involved in this emergency response system, they might be...
Absolutely. I actually, um, had just said that I think that, um, Jerry, Ian and John should definitely be part of that. I was just wondering, you just, we had just identified two people to review the accountant one. I just thought, is there another select board member who would like to also review the applications for the EMD?
Uh, on the board, I think you're by far the most qualified to do that for us.
Okay, so everybody's fine? Nobody else wants to go ahead and take a... Okay, so everybody's fine. Nobody else wants to go ahead and take a look at them? Okay. All right, then I'll just involve the three other besides Ed, the people basically on the call. Because it was EMD, police, fire, Jerry Swanson, Ed and myself. So I'll just have that group sort of choose, review the applications and possibly interview the candidates and then make a decision, okay? Any suggestions on that, Ed?
No, I think that is a great idea.
Okay, all right.
Covers all the, all the pertinent bases.
Okay, all right, thanks. Okay, moving on, then we're up to free cash. So as we heard, there's about 20,000, 20 or $22,000 that was in free cash. That was not, sort of, the capital committee did not allocate or make a recommendation for. And I think Chris had asked, did you ask to have this be part of the discussion? Obviously, it's subject to town meeting approval, which won't be happening for a while. But we just wanted to have a conversation with the select board about that, those funds.
Yeah, I think, I think at one point when we had brought it up or we learned about it, there was a question whether or not it was able to be carried over from fiscal year to fiscal year. And I think we got the answer that that was okay. But yeah, just in general, I, obviously we can't do anything until we have another town meeting. So I don't know if there's really much to, to discuss unless we're putting it back in capital committee's hands to try and reprogram.
And, and I think the other issue was is that the 2020 had fiscal year had to be closed out. And since it isn't, we can't do anything with that money anyway.
Yeah.
Right. Well, you know, I think that around the time we found out about it, you know, it was like, oh, the town meeting's happening and we had, like, that was the deadline for signing any warrants. And I actually honestly had given thought to say, let's just make the town meeting on the 24th and let's, you know, like, make a decision around this, whether it be put it back in the legal fund, put it back in streetlights, you know, whatever. But I honestly feel that we should give consideration to giving the town employees a raise. I mean, I just wanted to put that out there because, you know, it's, you know, up on the board, what, you know, this is my, first of my next term. And on one year, there was an override and there were no raises. And then there was thankfully a year when there was raises. And I just feel that, you know, it's just not great for employees to not get an annual raise. So, and if there's any funds available and it's not critical that it be put in anything, I think I might support considering giving people a raise and possibly taking the advice of PQB and trying to raise up somewhere somehow any really obvious disparity in any employees relative to the classification system.
Right.
So, I mean, we can't do anything now, but I just wanted to put that out there as something that I think we should be thinking about.
Okay.
Okay, so I guess we can't do much about it right now, but that's, I mean, we, we can talk about it once it becomes more reality. I mean, right now, we can't even have a town meeting, but I'd, I'd love to be able to, I'd love to be able to do that.
And, and if we can't give raises per se, could we do some kind of a bonus system? You know, some, some kind of an extra stipend to people? I don't know how far $20,000 will go. I think we may not.
Yeah, I think the thing with that is when then you look at the next year, which hopefully is going to be a lot better, then you're still basing the percentage increase on.
Yeah, I, I hear you, on what they had the previous year.
I ended up at one point getting, getting a bonus. And the problem with the bonus is you're lucky if you get, you know, a good amount of it. When you pay out a chunk like that, a bigger chunk comes out of taxes. That was my experience.
Yeah.
Anyway, it's definitely for, for future conversation.
Just let me clarify that that free cash will basically disappear when we close the books on fiscal year 20 and then apply for the recertification of free cash. So it will actually flow into the recertification of free cash that's available to be appropriated for fiscal year 22's budget.
Oh my. Because it becomes part of 21 that gets certified in, right? Into the 22 fiscal year. Is that right?
Right. And I mean, theoretically, once it's, once it is, once it flows to free cash, it's going to be allocated by the formula that we have in place. I can't remember what the specifics are to operating stabilization, capital stabilization, and then OPEB. My memory is that I think there's still 20 or 25% of it that is left that stays as free cash.
Right.
That could be, once it's certified, that other 20 or 25% is also available to be, or would be, available to be appropriated at a special town or fiscal year 21.
Wow. Well. So we only have 25, 20 or 25% of that $20,000 anyway, is that what you're saying? As free cash?
No, I'm, I'm saying that once this is closed out and recertified, it all, it will all flow over, but that entire free cash certification is then allocated by the policy that is in place.
Right, which leaves in free cash 20 or 25%. The rest goes to the operating and the, and the capital stabilizations. But based on the formula.
Well, that, but, but it's the entire, whatever is the entire, entirety of free cash is certified. So I mean, if, if you had $400,000 of free cash that's certified, 25% of that's $100,000.
Right, but we're just talking about how we could use this $20,000.
If it was only $100,000, it would only be $25,000. Right.
Yeah, that part I understand. I thought we were just talking about this $20,000. I'm done.
So it'll be rolled up and if it's more, it'll be a higher percentage.
Yes.
It'll just be, it'll be hidden a bit. But I just want to, for us to consider that. I mean, I think this has been a, it's rough when everybody has to work differently and work hard. And I just think it's worth us remembering that even though there are rules and we've gotten guidance around DOR and not using free cash to balance the budget or whatever, I still think these are unusual times and it's worth us considering that. The next thing is IT status update, Town Hall.
Yes, and we, we, as, as a part of that piece, we did apply for, I think it was roughly $24,000 in funding for 13, 13 laptops with docking stations for the, the department heads. So they would have the ability to work remotely if we have to close Town Hall, not only to the public, but work alternate work schedules or work remotely due to the COVID-19 positive numbers if it becomes that severe again, much like we had done to some extent, or to a good extent back in the springtime. So hopefully that will be a part of the application process that's approved and will get us those laptops rather than desktops for the department heads. And then on the rest of the networking system, I do have a meeting set up beginning of next week with one of our IT vendors, which has got the, the server to go over a specific schedule to come in and change that server out. And they also have some other equipment for us to come in and be installed.
Would it be appropriate for you to include a couple of the people who are new to the IT ad hoc committee?
I can try to do that.
Yep. Okay, any questions about the IT updates? Okay, the next is the Old Town Hall envelope study. So this was CPC funding and I think it was like 30 or $40,000 for.
30.
30,000, an envelope study for Old Town Hall. And I think we had somebody come out, didn't we?
Yes, actually Jamie Ryan Hart from Hill Engineers came out a few weeks back. And we had put it off. It was a choice between the Police Chief and myself during COVID, rather than bringing another person into the police station. But he came out a few weeks back, did, actually came in, did a complete walkthrough of the police station. He actually drew some floor maps because we didn't have any plans for the Old Town Hall Police Station for the floor space that was there. And he actually flew a drone to get a good look at the outside of the building. It actually did notice in one of the areas that Chief Ellingsworth had noticed had leaked in the past that a couple of things where the, on the backside of the building, there's a newer addition with a flat roof where like the dispatch is. And I think it's the booking area and that little, little garage. He did find that at one point in time, there was an old antenna that was on the roof that there were some pockets, there were some pocket flashing that is very possibly one of the reasons that, that may have leaked in that flat area. He also noticed by the video from the drone that the flashing where that flat roof goes up to the brick on the old building is starting to deteriorate. So he did that and he is working on his report. And I expect that we'll have that report back in a couple of weeks.
Do you know what that price tag is? I'm assuming it was within the, was there a bid for that? That matched up against the CPC approval amount?
Select, you mean for the study?
Yeah.
Yeah, we had, we had brought that back to the select board. I'd have to, yeah, I'd have to go back and look at the specific contract. There's about, I think, three different pieces to the proposal. But I think in to, I think in total, it came, I think it only came to about, I don't know, either 12 or $14,000. I'll go back and take a look at that.
I remember there being something where we asked if, well, if it wasn't going to be that much more to include X, Y and Z that were listed on that contract. I remember a discussion about that at some point.
Yeah, we, we expanded it from, I can't remember what the expansion was specifically. Might, might have been, might have been some ADA stuff in there. And, but I'll, I'll go back and pull that contract out.
Yeah, I remember.
I'll send it along to you. But I, but I seem to, I seem to remember that while there was one piece, it might have been a little variable. I think it was still was only about 12 grand or so. And I'll pull it out, refresh all our memories.
Okay.
Wasn't there a second, second vendor there that came and looked at it? Or am I not remembering that right? A second architect type person?
There was, yes. But we did not go with that particular, particular vendor.
Got it. Okay.
Any other questions about the Old Town Hall? Okay, next is the town parking lot plowing and sidewalk clearing. So we were asked to sign off on a contract and their recommendation was to send it out to bid to see what, who else might be interested in bidding on this. And so where are we at with that, Ed?
It is out there and available. It is due back on, let's say, the 16th? It's due back the day before the next select board meeting.
I thought you were going to say the day before the next snowstorm.
Please don't jinx that.
And how, how has that been advertised, Ed?
Randall has sent it out to some of the law also on our website.
Okay. Any questions about that?
Are we trying to get somebody from town or not necessarily?
It was, Randall put together the specs on it and then I turned it into a request for quotes because it's into more than 10, but less than 50 over the three year period that we're, we're asking for. But you will have to be careful when you do these things. You can't narrowly consciously try to.
Can't eliminate.
Anyone or whatever. And his original specification, he had it, the company had to be located within five miles of, I forget if he put the center of town or, or the area where, the primary area where this clearing would be done. And I told him that he really couldn't limit it that finitely. So it's, we, we changed it to the vendor because yes, we need a decent response time. What is, what is a reasonable, you know, response time to get here? So we expanded that a little bit to the successful vendor needs to be within 15 miles of the center of town.
Any other questions about that request for quotes? And the actual plowing, is the town, the town parking lot and sidewalk of the Town Hall? Does it, what other, what other municipal buildings is it?
It's for, for plowing, it is, let's see, a Town Hall. It is the Norris Elementary School and.
The library?
The lea, no, we do the library. I'm trying to think if it, it may include the police station. I'd have to go pull, pull it back to take a look. And then for sidewalk clearing, that is here at Town Hall. It is down Route 10 because we, we own the parcel, I think, that is right next door to the fire station. Let's say, it is the sidewalk in front of the police station. It is the sidewalk that we became responsible for last year when we acquired that seven or eight acre site for water protection on Palmeroy Meadow Road, which is like 12 or 1400 feet, which I think is the action of sidewalk clearing. I think, I think that's it for sidewalk clearing.
Okay. Any other questions about that?
I'll send it, I'll send it out to you each in an email and you can look at it and say, you can actually, because it's got some maps in it for the different areas or whatever.
Yeah, so if that means the Town Hall parking lot, does that mean the fire vehicles? Like clearing away so that the fire trucks can get out? I'm just thinking Norris School too. I mean, there's a definitely time urgency to some of this work. So anyway, that's.
Yeah, I don't, I, you know, I, I think we may do the fire department parking lot, but like I say, let, let me send it out to you because it's got, it's got the maps in it.
Okay.
That we're requiring them to do.
Okay, good. All right. So let's talk about the Madison Avenue Town Own Property update.
Did you skip over Community Preservation Committee?
Yes, thank you for catching that. What's, what's that about?
You would ask me to put CPC out on the agenda, so.
I bet you it had.
I got. Does it have to do with appointments?
No, no, I think we have a, we have a, Chris is our representative there. No, maybe, maybe.
It's Francine now.
Yeah. Oh, Francine, no. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
No, maybe I was thinking, or I was making a note, or it was relative to the Old Town Hall envelope study. It was, that was funded by CPC. So I think.
Oh, okay.
I think I need that. I put CPC.
You had both, both on there. You had the Old Town Hall and then you had CPC. So I, I thought there were two diff, two different items.
No, no, I think.
That's my, my misunderstanding.
Yep, no problem. Okay. So next then is Madison Avenue Town Own Property update.
Yep. And we had, I had let the select board know at the last meeting that everything, because everything does check out. It, you know, it was taken, this parcel was taken as tax title. It is not conservation land. Someone had put that note on there for some reason at the time that the property was taken in tax title, but it has not been assigned to. There's nothing on the deed that makes it conservation land. And then Mr. Martin had asked, asked me to, through the board, asked me to check and make sure that it's, the note on there that it was not a buildable lot was still valid. So I checked with the planning, planning board on that and no, it's still undersized from, I think, the required forty thousand square feet. Paul Demon had said he wasn't on the board when that decision was made, but no, that's still in our zoning bylaws. So that is still the case. And then at the last meeting, I think it was Mr. Martin again that had asked, just to make sure of what the assessed value was on the property. So I did include the property record card in your packet. It's a little over, let's see, it is twenty-one thousand, three hundred dollars currently. So then the question would be, you know, is the board interested in, you know, moving forth? Trying to dispose of this as surplus property? The process is somewhat similar to what we just went through with the ninety-three College Highway property. In, in this particular case, the parcel was taken as tax, in tax title. So it is currently in the control of the treasurer collector, Jen Day. So in order, if the board was interested in disposing this and through the bid process, it would require going to a town meeting, for a town meeting vote, to put it into the select board's, you know, authority and responsibility to be able to do that. And then at that point, if it passed the town meeting, then it would be up to the select board to, it's, it's below twenty-five thousand dollars again. So it doesn't fall into the specific requirements of the Massachusetts procurement laws for real property, which this is. So I mean, the board could put together a, you know, request for bids, request for proposals. I would think maybe a request for bids. Again, you can put, you know, some, you would be able to put restrictions on there again if you, you know, wish to. I mean, currently it's not a buildable lot under our zoning bylaws. Probably could put in there that it, no matter what, it always remaining a buildable lot. So and, and at that point, it would just be what process the board wanted to, you know, utilize. If it did want to dispose of it and go out to bids for it. And then through that whole process again, do you do a minimum bid? I would probably recommend you, that you, the board do that. And then, you know, recognize within that minimum bid, you know, the legal fees wouldn't be as extensive as they were with ninety-three College Highway, but still that, yes, this was some property, legal is going to have to do some work, you know, develop, purchase, sale, develop deed, what have you. So that's currently where we stand.
The original reason this was brought to our attention was because there was a resident on Buchanan Circle. So this is the same property you're referring to, but the land across the street is Madison?
Yes. It actually, the, the property record card shows this is Madison. Yes. Crystal Kane had reached out to us about this parcel and was interested in knowing if the town would be able to sell the parcel to her. And she's aware that it's not a buildable lot. You know, she, she likes that factor, but she would like to, you know, preserve it for, you know, for her own use.
So, so even though it's not a buildable, even though it's not a buildable lot, it's still valued at twenty-one thousand assessed? Is that what I heard?
Yes, it is. Yep.
Any other comments about that property?
I mean, I suppose somebody could go to ZBA and get a variance to build on that. So, I mean, if we end up selling it, going through the process, I, I guess I don't care if, if they build on it, if they go through the process, right? I, I can't see restricting it just for the sake of restricting it because who knows if the rules will change down the road.
Plus, why not, why not try to, you know, increase tax revenue, you know, tax income?
Sure, absolutely. But I'm guessing, she's across the road. I'm guessing there's a Butters too. So hopefully it'll stir a little interest once we decide to sell it.
Hey, I mean, it would, it would, yeah, I think the theory being that it would be ideal for kind of Butter to purchase it if they were interested in it rather than does it about it because you know, if actually the high bidder is someone that doesn't about it, you know, the assumption that, oh, yeah, I'm going to be able to build on it.
Well, that's up to them, yeah. But I think we should process it for a public sale if we're not going to have any need for it.
I agree.
But do you really think they could go to ZBA and get a variance and build on it? And then it's no longer, then the assessed value would be much more.
Right, but we would get tax revenue from that as, somebody set it up, was Chris or anybody?
You'd still get tax revenue for it.
Well, right now, as, you know, if we sell it and it's not buildable and they just have it as a, a yard and adjacent yard, you won't get much tax revenue. And they, they can go to the ZBA. Will ZBA approve a variance? I have a fear, you know. Yeah.
Well, I, 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 I would say that the ZBA should not give a variance on that because it, it's not that the topography makes it non-buildable. It does not meet our zoning code as far as the acceptable square footage.
Yeah. Yeah. I mean, they got, whoever buys it has just has to follow the normal process, whatever they do with it, I guess.
Yeah. So next steps, do, do we want to take a vote on it? Do we want more information?
Yeah. What's, what's the address again, Ed? I'm going to take a ride by myself.
Hang on a second. Hang on. Here it is. It's off Buchanan Circle, but it's got a Madison. Let's see. So, oh yeah, we own it. Oh, the heck. This is Madison Avenue, but I can tell you it's across the street from two Buchanan Circle.
Okay. That'll work. Thank you.
I can, I can, I can probably print out a tax map for it, I tell you.
Yeah, I can, I can go online and see it too, but, but thanks.
Okay.
And do I assume that we've already got a clear title to this since we own it and we don't need to have legal do title searches and all that stuff? Or is that not a right assumption?
Well, we took your tax title.
I know. But we also had the ninety-three gun highway property too, that wasn't totally clear. So things get dropped when we take things by other means. So I'm just wondering.
Touche, Chris, touche.
That's for sure. So I wonder too, what is the acreage of that lot?
Wasn't it like an acre or acre and a half?
It's about three quarters, probably a little under three quarters of an acre. It is, let's see.
They needed forty thousand square.
Thousand nine hundred and twenty-eight square feet.
Yeah.
And an acre is forty-four.
Yeah.
Can I make a suggestion that we maybe put this on the agenda for next time, that anybody who wants to go buy and check it out? I think, Chris, I think that you're the liaison to the Open Space Review Committee. I think they're, you know, I know it's nothing. I mean, we already own the land, but it might be worth looking at adjacent property to it. And, you know, I mean, I think right now there's a review of lands relative to Wildlife Corridor, water quality, aquifer and all that kind of stuff. It just might be worth just doing a little bit more research and putting it on the agenda for an upcoming meeting.
Yeah, that'd be good. But Ed, if you do have a copy of the assessors map, that would be good. I wouldn't, wouldn't mind getting a copy of whatever you have for the property.
Is everybody okay with that? We'll just put on the agenda for next time and people can go and check it out or, you know, do a little bit more review of the assessors map or whatever else.
You guys losing the connection or is it just me?
Just you.
Yeah, you're frozen. Yeah. You know, John, I wanted to mention that, you know, all the internet problem, you know, the problems I was having with Zoom, with not being able to see people, it was all because of my charter and I actually ended up upping my, the, I quadrupled the capacity. And now I'm not having any trouble whatsoever.
I'm good.
So the next is any other, are you, are you good, John? Are you with us now?
He's back.
You're moving.
He's, yes.
I've lost, I've lost the connection twice tonight already.
Yeah. Yeah, it might be worth checking with.
Oh, that's why I had to let you back in.
Yeah.
Okay. So any other necessary business that can't wait until the next meeting? I just had two questions that came up. Obviously, we're still waiting on the East Street Bridge for the license from the state. And I think you had said it was going to probably be at least a couple of months. So that's not going to happen right away. But you mentioned the Manhan River Bridge. Anything happening with that?
I've got to reach out. I know that their engineering vendor was supposed to finish up, I think, the bid and specifications at the end of October. So I'm going to follow up on them and see where they are as far as that going out to bid.
Okay. Does the weather of the winter, you know, is this going to have to be all put aside or is this something that they can do regardless of the weather?
That I, and I, at least the portion of actually putting it on the bridge, I would say they could do it regardless of the weather. But I know that they're going up to Brickyard, they're going up to Fulmer Road. So I know that there is some digging and I don't know if that is on the side of the road or under Route 10. So I am not exactly sure if this is something that can go on regardless of the weather. If it can go on, if the weather is mild during the, the wintertime or whatever. I'll find out.
You know what I have, I'm wondering about, maybe this is a silly question, but, so we're taking the water pipe out of the river, raising it up to the holdings that are underneath the bridge that were already put in when the bridge was done over. So it should be somewhat easy in that sense. Is there any difference in the tolerance, you know, to the temperature? You know, like if you're taking the, the pipes out of the ground and now putting it below a bridge, does that subject it to, does that change the tolerance for temperature?
Shouldn't, they would just maybe alter the, I mean, I imagine what's there now is probably old, whether it's clay ductile pipe or type of ductile pipe. They'll probably end up using some type of plastic piping, but no, it's, and it's, you know, if, if it was, there would be, they would insulate around it and it should be large enough that it should not be an issue. And, and actually, you know, from my understanding, a portion of it may not even be underground, but actually, you know, sitting, you know, with, with water running over it.
Okay.
But no, it should, it should not, it should not become an issue of freezing being on the bridge.
Okay. All right. So we're up then to the warrant.
Can I just ask a question unrelated, since I didn't bring it up before, but on the open space recreation plan.
Now you're freezing.
There were a few committees that were on it, but they didn't have representation and they have a role in this. Have they seen the draft or will they see the draft before, you know, before you send it in?
It was sent out to all the committee members, so.
But did you feed, did you get any feedback? My, my question is, they haven't participated in any meetings. So I'm wondering if they even, you know, got a chance to look over the report and get back to you.
I can, I can reach out to them again.
What are you referring to, Francine?
The, the reports, the draft report that they're working on.
What draft report?
For the open space recreation plan.
Space.
Oh, okay, yeah.
That's all.
Okay. Okay, let's move on then to the warrants. Chris, if you want to review them with us.
The PCF's first.
You skipped over the signatures.
Oh, well, thank you for all that. Francine, you're our representative. Francine, you're our representative to PQB. Want to read the PCFs?
Sure. We have a PCF for Joyce Skypack as the interim assistant accounting accountant, part-time, non-benefited to begin December 1st. And it is, the number of hours weekly was as needed. And the position title obviously is the assistant town accountant. Salary of 19.28 cents per hour.
Do you want to do this all these together or?
Sure.
Okay.
If you want, okay. Then we have a PRF for the town accountant, replacement for Vicki Morrow. Salary, annual salary not to, it would be a contract position, salary not to exceed $53,040 per, per year. And beginning as soon as possible. And then finally, the one for the interim town accountant. We have attached that as a job description and it goes, goes. So anyway, and then a PRF also for the interim town accountant within that, um, same financial guidelines as we had for the permanent position. I'm trying to find it here. Interim of $27.40 to $35 per hour for a 30-hour week. So that's it. Those three.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve the PCF and PRFs?
Sure, I'll make the motion.
Uh, John, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Any discussion, questions? All in favor?
Fish and I.
Fals eye.
Martin, I.
Broden, I. Okay. Now it's, we don't have any licenses or permits, so we have the warrants now.
Okay. We have, first up, we have a vendor payable warrant, W2117 in the amount of $172,000, sorry, $172,475.21. We have a payroll warrant, P2118. This is for 10/29 pay period. And the amount is $292,671.54. Along with that, there's the payroll deductible warrant, PD2118 in the amount of $49,667, $667.33. Sorry about that. And lastly, a payroll deduction warrant, which is basically the group health insurance and union dues. This is PD2118A in the amount of $207,444.92. And that's it.
Thank you. Any questions about the warrants? Other documents requiring signatures. We discussed this 93 College Highway deed. We're going to take care of that tomorrow. Is there a time that Lucy's going in there tomorrow that people should plan on coming by by?
She's got to be in most of the day.
Okay. All right. Next is minutes to approve. There are two sets of minutes, July 22nd and July 29th. Everybody get a chance to take a look at those? Any edits or comments? If not, can we have a motion to approve them both together?
So moved.
Uh, Chris, is there a second?
I'll second.
Everybody good? All in favor?
Fish and I.
Fals eye.
Martin, I.
And Groden, I. Any questions about the pending items, the dog complaint, Doers Grant, we talked about charter building, Clearwater Woodland Boundary and the disability? Any updates on the short-term, long-term disability?
Yeah, the vendor questions were due, I think it was last Thursday. Ed and I worked on the response, posted them up to the website. So now they have a little while to get their response in to us. I forget the opening date. I don't know if you remember the opening date off the top of your head, Ed.
I don't. Sorry.
Yeah. But the process is going on and we had some vendor questions that they wanted some demographic information. Ed put that together and put it in the agenda.
Ed, do you all set? Did you get those, you know, motion and second on the minutes?
Yes. Uh, Chris, the motion, Francine with the second. Thank you.
So you're good, ready to move on? We have okay, calendar appointments. We talked about November 17th, December 1st, and I think the 15th. And you can remove the special town meeting.
Yes.
Then that brings us to open time to the public. The stock board reserves a portion of its meeting for public comments and encourages participation. So would anybody like to be recognized? Nope? Henry, Robert, you're good? All righty. Are there any correspondence? Oh, okay. You want any correspondences?
No.
Okay, we have no executive session. Does anybody else have anything else before we adjourn? Then a motion to adjourn?
I move to adjourn at 9:18.
9:18.
I'll second it.
That's how we're keeping track of it.
It's always good to get this before. We want to get Ed home before he gets arrested, right?
Yeah, right.
All right. Francine's
I want to break the curfew on the first night. Did Chris, did Chris
Yes.
Okay.
Fish and I.
Fals eye.
Martin, I.
And Groden, I. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
All right.
Have a good one. Thanks, everybody.
Bye.
Have a good night.
You too.